Ms. Clerk, can you give us the, uh, roll call please?
Councilmember Brand. Councilmember Brandow.
Here.
Vice President Capriolio.
Here.
Councilmember Olivier.
Here.
Councilmember Quintero.
Here.
Councilmember Soria.
Here.
President Baines.
Here. All right, we can all stand, we're gonna have our invocation by Pastor Charlie Avalov, the Clovis Christian Center this morning, and remain standing immediately following our invocation, we will, uh, salute the flag.
Thank you for inviting me here to lead in prayer. Let us pray. We say good morning to you, Lord, and we want to thank you for giving us a good morning and giving us the breath of life to get up today and to be gathered here in this place. We pray for the city council meeting today. We ask that you give all the members your guidance, your wisdom, your insight in every agenda item. May they have clear direction and agreement in their decisions. Bless their efforts, Lord, and their decisions as you help them work for the good of our city. We want to pray for our mayor and her staff. We ask that you give her wisdom and understanding, give them all, uh, the ability to work together well for the affairs of our city. Give them your favor and your leading today in everything that they do. We pray for Police Chief Dyer and the police as they patrol the streets today. We ask for your protection and your, uh, guard against any evil. We pray that our law enforcement officials will have good strategies and plans for bringing down the crime and the violence in our city. We do also ask humbly, Lord, that you bless Fresno, prosper our businesses, our courts, our schools, our government officials. We pray that this city will flourish and thrive in every way. We also, Lord, are reminded today, and we're heavy-hearted and even perplexed for what happened in San Bernardino yesterday. We ask that you help us with that, Lord, and help the officials there and the regional center leaders, that you will guide their steps as they investigate all that has happened. We pray for those who lost loved ones. We ask that you comfort them. We pray for those who were injured, Lord. We ask for a speedy recovery for them. Have mercy on them, Lord. Finally, I would like to pray for our national leaders. We pray for our president and his staff, our military, and we pray for all the leaders of the free world, Lord, and the European countries especially, as they combat terrorism at home, abroad, and in the Middle East. Father, protect our troops, and we pray for those who are working for truth and justice, that they will overcome and succeed against those who are promoting terror and violence. Thank you, Lord, that good will triumph over evil, and you will turn around what was meant for evil for good. We ask that you give us all a good day today. Bless this city council meeting. In your name we pray, amen.
Face the flag, ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
All right, we'll now have our presentation of the SPCA Pet of the Month by Councilmember Soria.
Good morning, everyone. I'm here today presenting the SPCA animal of the, of our meeting, this, um, meeting, and so we have Erica here this morning, um, and so we want to thank SPCA for the work that they do in trying to, um, find and rehome a lot of the pets in our community, um, so very cute. What kind of dog is she?
Uh, well Erica's a Labrador Retriever mix. She's about three months old right now. She's probably gonna be about seventy pounds when she grows up. Uh, she came to us as a stray, which of course a lot of our animals do, and, uh, you know, we recently started our home-for-the-holiday sale, which is forty-nine dollars to adopt the dog currently at the CCSPCA.
And how long will that go for?
It's gonna go for the whole month, so we're hoping to achieve a one-thousand adoptions over there at the, uh, shelter, and right now we reached a hundred, so we're, we're on our way, and hopefully we get that number to a thousand at the end of the month.
Awesome. So we want to encourage everyone to help rehome many of the animals that, um, don't have a home here in our community. As you guys have heard, we have a holiday special. Um, any of my colleagues interested? Steve?
What do you think, special?
Forty-nine ninety-nine.
That's a dog, that's a evil.
I know, it's a beautiful dog. Yeah?
Beg him.
I'll, I'll work, I'll work, I'll work on him during the meeting, but again, thank you so much for the work that you guys do, and we're hoping that Erica is able to find a sweet home, um, this holiday season. Thank you so much.
All right, now, we'll now go to the approval of the minutes. We're gonna be approving the minutes of the November third, fifth, twelfth, and sixteenth meetings. Uh, do I?
There are, there are.
Yeah, I see there are changes to the minutes, go ahead.
Yes, there, there are some changes to the minutes. Uh, I did provide handouts so you could follow along, clerical corrections. Uh, on November fifth, two thousand fifteen, that's file fifteen-ten-sixty-six, page four, under approve agenda, we want to change the word move to announce to make it more clear. So it reads, "President Baines announced the five-thirty PM workshop would be moved to November twelfth." On page five, under closed session, we need to change an AM to a PM, and on page eight, uh, we would, in the paragraph discussing bonuses, we would like to change the word seize to cease.
Cease to cease. All right, fantastic.
Cease to cease, right.
Cease to cease, yeah.
And then on the minutes of November twelfth, we would like to add the words, "Resolution twenty-fifteen dash two-oh-two adopted as amended for item three A."
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the amended minutes?
Yes.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second, all those in favor? All opposed? Item passes six-zero with Councilmember Soria asking. Well, now move on to our council member reports and comments. Do I have any council members that would like to report out anything? All right, seen none. We will move to the approval of the agenda. Um, do we have any changes to the agenda, Ms. Clerk?
Yes, there are a few changes to the agenda. And I've got those right here. All right, first I'd like to remind everyone that there was a nine o'clock special meeting called, it's a closed-session item. Then, um, the ten o'clock AM item, that's file fifteen-ten-fifty, uh, due to timing issues, we will only be hearing part one and part two of that item, that is, a resolution of formation of community facilities, District Number Fifteen, and number two, resolution calling special mail ballot election, and that election date will not be December third, that election date will be January seven, two thousand sixteen. And we will not be hearing parts three and four, that is, the resolution declaring election results, and the bill for introduction and adoption of levying a special property tax.
All right, thank you. Are there all the changes to the agenda?
Yes.
All right, now I have a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Yes.
All right, all right, I have a motion, a second, all those in favor? All opposed? Item passes seven-zero. We'll now move on to our consent calendar. Do I have any council members like to remove any item from the consent calendar this morning? Councilmember Brandow.
Council President, I'd like to, uh, pull item one A for discussion, please.
That's one A? All right, item one A? All right, we will now take the consent calendar out to the public. Do we have any members of the public that would like to comment on the consent calendar? Right, seen none, I'll bring it back to the dais. Do I have a motion to approve the balance of the consent calendar?
Motion to approve.
All right, motion, move in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item passes seven-zero. We'll now move to item one A, Councilmember Brandow.
All right. Council President, you're gonna be the one to help me with one A, perfect. Um, so in reality, could you just basically help me out? I've been fighting a cold, so I haven't really followed as much as I should've been. What do we want to accomplish right here?
Uh, hi, first of all, Brian Horn, Assistant CIO, City of Fresno, ZI Information Services Department. What you are approving to award is a, an RFP that was put out for us to have our aging radio infrastructure and, uh, network communication system, uh, assessed and evaluated and give us some recommendations for moving forward on how we can upgrade it, support it. Our, our infrastructure is aging, it's communications for fire and police, basically, and it is over ten years old and needs some attention, so we haven't been able to do that because of all the budget cuts and the downfalls, and now the city's coming back into an appropriate direction, um, but we're looking for a consultant to come in and take a look at the whole thing to assess it, find out if our configurations are right, if we have the equipment in the right places, also, what needs to be upgraded, and, and give us those recommendations so at a future date we can come back and decide how we want to, um, support it and upgrade it.
Okay, hey Brian, is it, so at the end result is a complete overhaul, not just a partial of, is that correct?
Yes, at the end result, um, we're, we're, they're going to look at it to tell us what we need to do to over, overhaul it. This is part one, this is consultant coming in and telling us, here's your problem areas, um, with the tools that they have, they can show us where we have deficits, and then recommend how we overhaul it. So there's gonna be a part two. We do need to put our attention into the communication system. This is just part one, to get the recommendations out there, um, so that we can come back and say, hey, this is what we really need to do to get this, to get this, uh, system in, to be whole.
And Brian, how many, do we know how many people responded to the RFP?
Yeah, there were six of them that responded to the RFP.
Okay. And, and then I'm just assuming, this type of job, is this probably a local company? Um, that we're awarding the contract to?
No. Are they, where are they?
Uh, based on, I don't know if they have resources also.
Yeah, they're out of Colorado, and have a presence in Pleasanton. There were six respondents, three of them we interviewed, um, there was only one of them that came to be clear, uh, clear winner, head and shoulders, because they were very meticulous in their solution and their proposal, and we were able to understand what they were going to do for us. Uh, we did check their references, and they do a very good job everywhere they've been. Uh, whoever, the, the agencies we talked to were very happy with them, very pleased, and would recommend them as well as bring them back, so.
But it sounds like you got the right, right group then, Brian. How, how long do you think the, the assessment will take before we can start?
This is a nine-month process, uh, but there are milestones in between, so there'll be, there'll be, there'll be some stopping points that we can actually look at, um, some solutions along the way, but it should take them about nine months to get it done.
Okay. Hey, thanks, Brian, that's a good report. Motion to approve.
All right, I have a motion, a second, Councilmember Quintero. Brian?
Yes, sir.
As you know, I'm probably one of the council members or the council member that's the most technologically challenged.
Sure.
Uh, the comments I want to make, it, it seems that the past, uh, three or four years, we keep spending money on upgrades in ISD, and it just, you know, it seems like it's never-ending, there's always an upgrade, there's always a, a consultant contract, and yet, uh, you know, I know for my computer it's slower, I get all these ads that I don't want, uh, on there, and, and that type of thing, and it, it just seems like, uh, and I know technology changes, it, there's a lot of changes, but it just doesn't seem like it doesn't get any better with all the upgrades that we've spent on. So, I mean, what, what is this gonna do that hasn't been done in the past?
This is for our radio systems, for the fire and police, when they get on the radio and they talk to each other citywide, um, so this is actually the communications. We've not put a lot of money into this yet. Um, we basically have been keeping the system afloat as we've gone along, uh, making sure that it stays, but this is public safety, so if, if radio dispatch, um, either for fire or police needs to dispatch, uh, a, an officer or a vehicle for fires or for, um, a, a PD event, then this is how they communicate with each other. So on the radio system, we did upgrade the radios themselves about two thousand twelve, but there's an underlying, um, network that is present that hasn't been really, that needs attention. So this is gonna be radios, when it's not gonna be computers, it's not gonna be your network, it's not gonna be internet service, it's basically the radio infrastructure that, that fire and police use. So that's where, how that separates.
And do we anticipate any more upgrade requests or consultants this coming year?
Uh, there, there's one more for a strategic plan coming up for, um, in the seventeenth, we're, we're trying to get it on the agenda item for the strategic plan, but that's an overall plan for our, for the, not the infrastructure, but our operations citywide, so.
Strategic plans before too.
Yeah.
Excuse me, Councilmember, if I may?
Thank you.
If I may, um, yes, it does appear that there's a lot of, of changes with the technology, and that is the nature of, of technology. Um, we are actually behind in that area, and so I would anticipate that we are going to see not only, um, future consultant contracts coming forward to identify the best path forward in addressing our technology needs, but, um, also the actual outlay and expenditures for that technology, and that's where the real expense is going to come in. So the, the benefit of having the consultants come in is that they can identify the most efficient way for us to move forward, how we can phase it, and also help us identify, um, financing available for that. This particular item here, um, we've, we've discussed, as you know, several times, how important it is for our police and fire to be able to communicate when they're out in the field and they're responding, and, um, we have had, we have had some, some spotty issues with that, we've sort of banned, band-aided that together, and what this is going to do is bring us up to current technology with, with that system.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have a motion, we have a second, all those in favor? All opposed? Item passes seven-zero. All right, we're now going to move to our closed-session items. Um, City Attorney, can you make an announcement on our closed session, please?
Yes, we have two items, one is not timed, the, uh, existing litigation state, people of the State of California and City of Fresno versus Mar, Mar Edge Properties, that's Rick Morse, and also the special meeting notice for deciding whether to initiate litigation, City of Fresno versus Chris Henry.
All right. I have several cards to, uh, comment on for closed sessions, so I'll call them in the order in which I received, but rest assured that even though after I get through the cards, if you have a comment that you'd like to make on any of our closed-session items, we will receive it. First up, I have Patience Milrod. And if you could state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Council President Baines. My name is Patience Milrod, my office address is eight-four-four North Van Ness in the Tower District. Um, I am here because I am so happy to see that Councilmember Olivier, Councilmember Brand have already declared that this kind of event at Somerset will not reoccur, um, for, we're seeing political will, we're seeing unequivocal commitment, we appreciate that. Two messages for those of you on the dais, not only the council members. The pending sale of this property does not end the story. This cannot happen again. Somerset is the tip of a huge iceberg here in Fresno. These conditions exist all over the city. For you on the council, it is time to enact systematic code enforcement ordinances that require regular, periodic inspection and aggressive, effective enforcement. For those of you who represent the administrative arm of this government, it is time to end the execution risk that exists when the council asks, acts, and there is inadequate action on the part of those who are tasked with enforcing the ordinances the council passes. So it is time to make sure that you have adequately staffed and trained, and that there is quality control on the enforcement side, and until you do that, the most vulnerable, as Councilmember Brand accurately identified them, the most vulnerable of your constituents will continue to suffer these experiences that no one in Fresno should have to suffer, not only because of the landlord, but also because the city has an obligation here, in the same way it has an obligation to put out that house fire. You, you don't say, well, we're not sending fire off firefighters over there because we don't have enough staff. You send the firefighters in exactly the same way. This is law enforcement, and it is necessary that the city enforce the state laws and the local ordinances that guarantee to every resident a safe and healthy home. So thank you for what you're about to do, and I urge you to take those additional steps, and there are many of us who can identify for you where to start, which landlords to start with, and how to make sure that this is done systematically, efficiently, cost-effectively, and well. Thank you very much.
Tom Sims. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Council President, members of council, I'm Tom Sims, I'm local pastor at forty-one forty-one Ministries on Fresno Street, I'm chairman of the Board of Fresno Interdenominational Refugee Ministries, and I'm interim director of missions for Mid Valley Southern Baptist Association interfacing with, uh, three of the, uh, organizations that are actively working with the people of Somerset. Uh, my picture of Somerset, and I, I definitely want to take the time to thank Councilman Olivier for his, uh, stands, also for your help, uh, over the weekend, partnership in putting together a coalition to address needs that had come to a critical place. What we see in Somerset, we've been tracking for a long time, we've been working with our people, they're our neighbors, to empower them, to, uh, validate them, to advocate for them, to teach them to advocate for themselves. Uh, it's been a very, very long process, and it's moved from annoyances to difficulties to just major, uh, problems with their housing until it's erupted into this emergency. And this volcano has gotten a lot of attention, and it has strengthened, I hope, your resolve to do some of the things that Prudence suggested, and hopefully it gives you the backup that you need, and hopefully we can give you the backup that you need to take a strong stand. I appreciate your indignation with the deflection of responsibility of the property owner. I've met with him, he, he comes across as a, as a nice guy, but totally clueless, and I think that may be appropriate because we're living in a, in a rather clueless cloud that, uh, where it's easy to overlook these issues, but they are prevalent, they are pervasive, and if there's one good thing that can come out of this human tragedy, it's that we'll take a look at other latent dormant volcanoes that are about to erupt in our city, and we'll be able to, uh, deal with the issues while they're easy to deal with, or at least easier to deal with. And so I applaud you for this, declaring the state of emergency, but I will say that our, our people, our friends, our neighbors, have been living in very difficult circumstances for a long time, as the code violations that you have found, um, are indicating. These did not happen overnight. So let me know how I can help you, how I can support you in this, and thank you for the opportunity to address it.
Rick Weiner. Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Council President Baines, Council. Uh, I'm Rabbi Rick Weiner, Temple Beth Israel, uh, sixty-six twenty-two North Morella, as well as a resident of the city, a board member of Faith and Community, part of the Building Healthy Communities Collaborative. We thank you for the strong statements you've made as, um, a reaction to what has gone on, um, at Somerset. My tradition teaches me that, um, words are wonderful, but actually the Hebrew word for word is also the same as the word for deed or a thing, and so beyond words is what we actually do. And, uh, to reflect those who have spoken before, um, we support, um, moving forward in a very strong manner to make sure that this does not happen again. It's time to really, uh, make sure that this is, um, a work of proaction, not reaction, and we do so by clearly sending a message that this cannot continue to happen in our city, this will not continue to happen in our city, and we do so with the deeds of setting a serious precedent that, um, the responsible, uh, owners, um, are, are, are welcome and, and celebrated to do business here. Those who are not doing their job properly are not going to be able to continue to do business as usual. Thank you for the work you've done so far, thank you for the, um, response, and thank you for the continued work of making sure all of our residents, um, are given a safe, um, refuge, uh, from life storms. Thank you.
Holly R. Owen. Please state your name and address for the record.
Holly Owen, one-four-three-four East Santa Ana Avenue in Fresno. I am a planning consultant here in the Central Valley, I work for a number of cities, and I also am the planning director for the city of Kingsburg. I, like a number of, uh, citizens, heard about this incident through the newspaper. Uh, I am also a longtime volunteer for firm, and have been, uh, since I came to Fresno, and the first thing that I, I thought of was their involvement. I, I went down with some blankets, and, uh, it was a dark Sunday night, and the only door that was open, uh, and, and a cheerful reception was, was given to everybody was, was with firm. That said, um, I, in my practice, I do know that private property rights in America are protected by a lot of case law, but when taxpayer dollars received are, are not, uh, not honored, uh, in terms of the, the bargain that people, people receive when they, when they receive taxpayer dollars, uh, then you really are talking about theft. I also, uh, am concerned about the, the nonprofits that are stretched at this point to try to provide services. This is a, a short-term and very visible problem, but as my, um, some of the, the previous speakers have alluded to, uh, we have a, a larger problem, uh, and that is a, a code enforcement, uh, issue that, that needs to be, uh, to be, uh, continued, uh, and this will shed certainly light on the need here in, in the, in the city. And I understand that, that we're in a state of emergency right now, but, uh, as a, as a citizen of Fresno, and as a proud citizen of Fresno, uh, I am certainly hoping that we are going to take a new look at, at how we handle those who are in need in our city. Thank you.
Do we have any other members of the public that would like to speak on our closed-session items? Come on down, state your name and address for the record.
My name's Andy Levine, I'm, uh, here representing Faith and Community and a part of the Building Healthy Communities Collaborative. Um, you know, I just want to echo, um, much- Yeah, I just want to echo much of what's already been said, just commending you for the actions, the words you've been lifting up the last week and the action you're taking this morning and will be taking in the coming days. Really commend you for that. Also want to just remind you, but of course all of us, that this is going to be an important step at Somerset for the 2,000 or so residents who are counting on strong action and defense. But this will not solve the broader systemic problem that we have in our city. We have, Somerset is really the tip of the iceberg. We have thousands of residents who have for years been living in not only deplorable, but legally defined as unsafe and unhealthy conditions by the state of California. And so, you know, want to just remind us that this is one of many property owners who are preying on people who have little power in their eyes and in our eyes and are low-income and folks that are vulnerable. And so it's really our job as all of us, but especially the city of Fresno, to defend those that are vulnerable. And so to be aware of, we believe you know who the other property owners are who have been preying on the vulnerable for years and decades. If that's not clear, we're happy to bring, you know, residents who are living in these conditions in front of you to help to shed some light on who those are and to really hold them accountable and the city attorney's office in particular to hold those property owners accountable. And we're encouraged to hear the commitment to Phase Two, which will look at the interior inspections for housing conditions, both vacant and tenant-occupied. We're encouraged to hear that'll take place in January. The only thing I would lift up there is that our residents can't afford for this to be an ongoing discussion for months and months and months and just talking about this. This is a systemic problem that needed to be addressed years ago and obviously there are multitudes of reasons for why that was not the case. But we need a routine and mandatory inspection program to ensure the conditions that our folks are living in as soon as possible. And so just urge you, but again, this is on all of us, for us all to take action to ensure that our families are protected and our conditions are safe and healthy for all of us going forward. So thank you again.
Do we have any other members of the public that would like, come on down, state your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, council members. I'm Reverend Sophia DeWitt and I reside at 4910 North Sequoia Avenue, 104, in District One. I speak this morning as a private citizen, but I also speak based on my 12 years of leadership experience with FIRM, Fresno Interdenominational Refugee Ministries, particularly in its housing advocacy program. And so maybe I'm uniquely positioned to have some history about the Somerset community's needs, issues at that complex, and work that FIRM has done over the many years in housing issues. FIRM began to be engaged with the Somerset community in 1997 when the organization rented a vacant or used a vacant unit in the complex to provide English as a second language classes. As soon as the organization purchased its current property, its current office location in 2002, residents began, from Somerset, began coming over to FIRM and describing their housing issues and concerns. Based on that feedback and the feedback that we got from other clients and neighborhoods across the city, FIRM instituted and found funding for a housing advocacy program beginning in 2003 and going all the way to 2010, which provided tenant landlord rights and responsibilities education and also helped individual tenants as well as apartment complex communities begin to come together to ask for healthier housing. In 2006, there was a meeting held at FIRM with apartment owner Chris Henry and a bunch of residents detailing a list of repair needs as he was asking for a rent increase. Some minor repairs were made then, but clearly problems remained. We also, over the many years, spoke with previous councils, previous mayors, and the current mayor and a number of council members about policy fixes through the former mayor's 10 by 10 initiative and other initiatives, including things like mandatory proactive inspections of units, the use of receivership for bad properties, and a way that the city code enforcement could work with nonprofits to take complaints from nonprofits. So this has been going on a long time and policy recommendations have been made over many years. I hope at this point, the council and the city is ready to move forward with some real solutions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other members of the public that would like to speak on this item?
Hello and thank you. My name is Nuveen. I come as a private citizen. I'm actually, I have a past with Somerset Apartments. I grew up there. My parents, you know, when they first came to Fresno, they decided to stay in Somerset Apartments in the 90s. And so I have spent over a decade of my life there at the apartments and I know, you know, firsthand experiences with these apartments. And if you go and you walk through, you see that, you know, a lot of the apartments are rundown, the paints have chipped off. If you go inside the apartments, they're cockroach infested, they have rats. If you go at night, you can even hear the cockroaches crawling on the sidewalks. It's that bad. And it's sad that, you know, the apartments have come to this condition and unfortunate that we've had this situation to have attention, you know, diverted to or paid to these apartments. And so, you know, I want you guys to take notice of these and try and change these apartments. You know, this is just one very unfortunate example of many of the apartments that are hap, you know, the conditions that are in Fresno. And as a person who's spent the majority of my time there, you know, a lot of people have, you know, a background that may have been like my Southeast Asian as a refugee and are low-income, they might not, you know, have the education and so that is the only option for them. And so, you know, I hope that you guys talk to residents and find some sort of a solution to remedy this because it is something that, you know, affects our community. It is something that, you know, a lot of people, they have to live in these conditions and they don't have a voice. You know, my parents are, you know, second language, English, and they don't speak English or they didn't know that they had a right to speak it. And so I just, you know, hope that you guys focus on it and try and find some sort of a solution because it is a problem in our community. Thank you.
Come on down, state your name and address for the record.
Good morning. My name is Alejandra Tobar. I work for California Rural Legal Assistance Foundation and I'm also part of Building Healthy Communities. Today I'm here to echo what everybody has said already. It's great that you're taking a step forward in putting an inspection in this apartment complex, but it's not only this place. It's been many, many places in Fresno City and it's impossible that we're in the 20th century and people are still living in those conditions. So I urge you to not only inspect this apartment complex, there's many, many places. We have the farm workers who live in horrible conditions and I just ask you to touch your heart and look for the people who need it the most. Thank you.
Do we have any other members of the public that would like to speak on this issue? Come on down, state your name and address for the record.
Good morning, council members. Ashley Warner with Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability. I just wanted to come today on behalf of our organization to just, you know, echo what everybody else in this audience has been saying, that this is something, you know, we hear from residents again and again and again, that they experience really significant hazardous conditions in houses and housing that they live in in the city and that, you know, there is no need for that now and we can do better. And I think this instant with Somerset Apartments demonstrates that we have to do better for our residents. So, you know, we really hope going forward, we can begin to take code enforcement really seriously and begin to systematically enforce the laws that are on the books. And I think in addition to that, we need to look at this as an overall issue relating to our production of affordable housing in Fresno. As an organization, we've really tried to highlight to Fresno how we can and have to be doing better to ensure that we're producing safe affordable housing for residents. We have a huge deficit of affordable housing. We have some great programs in our current housing element that are not being enforced right now and acted on. And those programs are specifically designed to support the creation of affordable housing. So, you know, we encourage you to be doing everything you can to understand what programs the city has committed to doing and making sure that the city is doing an effective job of implementing them. Because if we have more housing, affordable housing available in the city, tenants will not be forced to live in the conditions that they're living in now. So, thank you.
All right. Do we have any other members of the public that would like to speak on this item? All right, seeing none, I'll bring you back to the dais. Councilmember Soria.
I just want to give thanks to everyone that came up and testified today and just provided comments in terms of the current situation that many of our community residents in the city of Fresno are experiencing as a result of negligence from landlords like Mr. Henry. And I think that, I will say that I was very proud to have been part of the Monday meeting where all my colleagues stood in solidarity to really talk about the issue in terms of that this is something that we're not going to tolerate. And so one of the things that I know the administration has already committed to, which is the Phase Two of the task force, and I think that's great, but I think we also, as mentioned, in the interim, in short term, the city of Fresno cannot afford to see another housing complex go through a similar situation. So I know, I just want to put for the record, right now I am working with my council colleague, Paul Capriolo, to bring forth at least what is a short-term while that task force is in place because we know that that task force is going to take a few months to come up with some policy recommendations. But I do believe that we need to create something in the interim that really shows our commitment, that we are going to chip away at some of these issues that are facing in our community. So we're hoping to bring something forward to the council in the next couple of weeks.
Councilmember Olivier.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Councilmember Soria, for your remarks on that. You know, there have been a couple of times since I've been on the city council where my heart has changed. And one of them has been in relation to the slumlord situation in this community. I think it began when I was challenged to stay on the Blight Task Force that we participated in last year. And I began to understand a little bit about why Fresno is unique and why we're suffering with these problems. That being said, I am looking forward to the task force that is going to be convening again next year to talk about interior inspections. But let me just say this, I know that there are some people from the, from our community and maybe even some people on this council right now who are going to say absolutely not to any kind of interior inspection program. And this is going to be a big debate in our community. So some folks from the community are going to say absolutely not. Some folks are going to say inspect every unit. And I can tell both sides, having been in the arena for five years, it's not going to turn out the way your side wants it and it's not going to turn out the way the libertarians want it. It's going to be something in between. It's going to be something that will probably be equally unacceptable to our activists and as well as to our conservatives and libertarians who don't want government agents in their home. So be prepared for that because the political process always turns out to disappoint everybody on both sides. And it doesn't take, you know, me to explain that. I would like to personally thank Tom Sims for coming here this morning and speaking. Tom and I, along with, oh, I can't remember the name of our fire captain who is out there with us, Jeff, Jeff Gwynn, who is out with us. When I received a call from Zach Dara, who's the executive director of FIRM, we, it was Tom because Zach, that Friday, had a wedding to go to that he couldn't get out of it. It was that one of his siblings got married on Saturday. So it was felt to Tom and myself and to Jeff Gwynn and also Katrina from the Red Cross. And so the four of us, we did what we could to get the population of Somerset Apartments through the weekend. And, you know, I look back on it now and I think, oh, I wish we could have done more. You know, now I think of this, oh, I wish we could have done that. But I think that, I think that, Tom, we did a good job that Friday, Saturday, and Sunday and I thank you for what you did. You're an incredible asset to our community and it's been really fun working with you. That being said, you mentioned something. You mentioned that it's part of your mission to teach, to teach folks to advocate for themselves. And I really appreciate you saying that because whatever form your thing takes with Councilmember Capriolo, whatever form the task force comes up with, teaching, having people advocate for themselves has got to be as stressed and critical and important as whatever the administration and this city's response is going to be. And this is because I have, I'm in the process of doing an even more detailed record search through my request for service system in my office. I have had complaints about, what is it called, the Palm Lakes Apartments across the street on the other side of Angus from the Somerset Apartments. I've had complaints about that and my office and code enforcement were on that immediately and those were rectified. I can, I can look you in the eye and tell you right now that my office has never received a complaint from, since I've been in office, maybe it was before I got there, but since I've been in office, we've never received a complaint from the people at the Somerset Apartments. I didn't get a phone call from Reverend Sharon Stanley. I never got a phone call from Christine Barker. I never got a phone call about it from Zach until that Friday, two weeks ago, when the bomb dropped on this city. So I think that it's so very critical that if it comes in the form of a public relations campaign or public education campaign in several languages, everyone is entitled to a free inspection right now. And our code enforcement officers will go out right now. As advocates, you've got to help us. You have to help this organization. You have to help meet us halfway because, like I said, whatever form this takes, it's not going to be 150 inspectors like they have in Oakland that go out and inspect every unit that's turning. It's going to be something else. And so that's why it's so critical that our residents are, get educated and find the courage to know that not only our activist community, but the city government are standing behind them in the quest for healthy housing. And so when folks come forward and when folks call my office, I have been in the slum apartments. I have been in the subpar homes because some people have found the courage to call me and I've gone out there with them. And I've been happy to do that. I've gone out with code enforcement. And so I think that working together is critical, working together as a council is critical, working with our mayor and city manager is going to be critical. And working with our activists is going to be critical too. And I want to work with you. And I want things to change in our city for the better, for people's health and their safety. And so I do appreciate the statement about helping folks to advocate for themselves because the people have to back us up, the tenants have to support us as we go out there and we do this. We're going to need folks to, I mean, imagine if our phones lit up every day with complaints, things would change really, really quick. So I do appreciate all the comments and I appreciate all of you for being here this morning. Thank you.
Councilwoman Brand.
Just wanted to add, you know, the comments Councilmember Soria and Olivier made. For someone who's been in the business for 30-plus years and I've seen the best of it and I've seen the worst of it. And I've already engaged the Greater Fresno Apartment Association, that encourages them to be proactive and to be cooperative. And I think you're going to see kind of a spirit and I think in the final result of a lot more cooperation because vast majority of property owners are good, responsible property owners that have standards. And I think there are significant problems in this community with properties that are not properly maintained and the Somerset Village unfortunately was an example of how it really can go wrong. And I'm hoping that this unfortunate human tragedy is a catalyst for changing how we do things in Fresno and trying to make a systemic change across the board. And I agree with my colleague, Mr. Olivier, that it's going to be hard. You're never going to get exactly what you want. But I think my hope is that the end result is going to be a process that greatly improves accountability for the city of Fresno and greatly improves the lives of those people at the bottom end of the social scale that are struggling as new citizens, that we can lift the conditions for them and improve their way of life and we can feel better ourselves as what we do as leaders to make us a better community for everybody.
All right. We are, we are now going to adjourn to closed session and discuss our closed session items that were announced. And when we return, we're going to take up our timed items, the first one starting at 10 o'clock. So, we will recess to closed session, and when we come out, we'll make an announcement, if one is needed, about our results of closed session, and then we'll take up our regular scheduled calendar. If I can have staff for the, our 10 a.m. hearing, hearing to adopt resolutions and ordinance to consider the information of a special tax district. And just for, to let folks know, we're going to, we have a couple of timed items we have to take first. They should, I'm anticipating that they won't take a very long time, but we're going to take those in order. So, we had a very long morning, so we're going to take our 10 o'clock item, then we're going to take our 10:15 item, then we'll move right into our 1:30 timed item. Staff, right ahead.
Good afternoon, Council President Baines and members of the council. I'm Andrew Benelli with the Public Works Department. I'm here today to present a public hearing for Community Facilities District. This is a assessment district that's being formed in the area of Copper River, near the intersection of Copper and Willow. We have four recommendations in the staff report. One is to adopt the resolution of formation to establish Community Facilities District 15 and authorizing the levy of a special tax. The second recommendation is to adopt the resolution calling for a special mailed ballot election. I would ask that a slight change be made in that in the date. It identifies that today would be the date of the, of the election. However, we did not receive all of the ballots back yet, and we asked, ballots include a waiver allowing for the election to occur without a waiting period. Our city code requires a 30-day waiting period. So, anyway, we're asking that that be changed to January 7th, which we'll come back then to count the ballots. We'd also ask that the resolution declaring the election results be postponed or not voted on today. We'll bring that back on the 7th. And the ordinance levying the special tax for the property tax year of 2015-16, which is our, our fourth recommendation, will also be moved to the 7th. With that, I recommend you have the public hearing and vote on those two items.
All right. Well, now I'll take the item out to the public. Do we have any members of the public wishing to comment on this item?
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. Jeff Roberts, speaking on behalf of the Copper River Ranch Project and in favor of the staff recommendation as amended here this afternoon. Be happy to answer any questions, but appreciate your support for the staff recommendation. Thank you.
Do we have any other members of the public that would like to comment on this item? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the Diaz Councilmember Brandau.
Council President, I think this is Council District 6, isn't that correct? So, without Mr. Brand here, I'll just make a motion to approve staff recommendation.
I'll second that. We have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes 5-0 with Councilmembers Capiolo and Brand absent. We'll now take our 10:15 hearing. And this is a hearing to consider adoption of resolutions related to the designation properties to the local register of historic resources.
Thank you, and I will be brief. I understand we are behind time, but I'm delighted to acknowledge the fact that we've had several property owners and our commission chair here. I'm not sure they were able to stay. But we do have seven items on behalf of the Historic Preservation Commission being brought to you for your consideration for designation to the local register of historic resources. Four of them were found in that South Van S industrial district area. That's a state-sponsored survey that came to you in August and that you did adopt and approve. And I just will flip through these. The Historic Preservation Ordinance, of course, is found at Fresno Municipal Code 121600. And I think an important point to make today is that properties have all been evaluated for their age of 50 years, usually, and their integrity to the period of significance and that they're historically significant. And in terms of protocol, the seven property owners have all approved and asked to have their properties placed on the register. And there's some nice benefits for being a historic property, certainly the use of the California Historical Building Code. And flexibility under our own current zoning code is great and helpful and sustainable. It's kind of nice to not tear down a good building. And I'll show you a great example of adaptive reuse in a minute. But rather quickly, I'm going to show you the seven properties. The first is the Azteca Theater, 836-840 in Chinatown. And this was an important venue for the Mexican-American community, largest community in San Joaquin Valley, was here in Fresno, 1948. The theater was built, served to show Hispanic, Spanish-language films. But most importantly, you know, is the gentleman who became the manager, Arturo Tirado, who was from Mexico, Spanish family. He was a giant. He was able to bring not only the first run films from Mexico, but also the film stars. So, this would be like us going to the Tower Theater and seeing Jimmy Cooper or whatever in the quote-unquote, you know, Hollywood culture. And later on, it became very important in Fresno's Latino community. It served as a community center. It's trying to do that now. And Cesar Chavez held a rally there when he came through on his march to Sacramento. The next building is the Dudley Elsie Bates Home in the Wilson Island Historic District. It's a beautiful property constructed in 1925 and associated with several people, including the former presiding justice of the California Court of Appeal. The Judy Tobacco Building, which is one of the properties in the South Van S, mid-century modern building here at Van S in Los Angeles, has a little art deco thing going on in the front, if you will. But what's really exciting is the current owner, who I don't believe is here, Mark Baskin, has adaptively reused this to become a boxing gym. And the Golden Gate, Golden Gloves is going to have their state tournament there. So, this is the best of not only fixing up an old building, but bringing people and business into Fresno. And this is the way it looks now. It's pretty amazing. And here's the interior. Next building is a squirt bottling company. You probably can recognize that that is a Quonset Hut. Quonset Huts, of course, come out of the First World War and became surplus after the Second World War. You see them sometimes as outbuildings on farms. Very rare to see one in the city. This is the Alice and John Williams Home in 100-year-old property near City College, was right on the streetcar line in the Wilson Island, the Wilson track, I should say, and did serve briefly as a women's, for women's students at Fresno State, now City. United Grocers, 414 P Street. We have a connection here to High Speed Rail, because High Speed Rail has relocated business to this building. And the people are extremely excited and love this building and want to preserve and protect it. So, yay. It was built prior to 1928. And the interesting thing is it was literally cut in half in, when State Route 41 went through. Here you can see the 1928 Sanborn with a whole building, which was a monster, really quite large. And if you just turn it around in your head a little bit, you can see what's left, but it still has a lot of integrity. It's a beautiful building. And last but not least, White Truck Company Electric Motor Shop, of course, owned for, since 1948, I think off the top of my head, by the Cagliari family, a lovely building and formerly Mission Revival that was sort of updated in '49 to be retro art deco. And so, the recommendations of the staff and the commission are to find all of these buildings eligible and to adopt the resolutions that are attached to your staff report. And I'm happy to answer any questions, should you have any.
All right. I'll now take this item out to the public. Do we have any members of the public wishing to comment on this item? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the Diaz Councilmember Quintero.
Thank you, Mr. President. Corona, thank you very much for your report and a lot the, and bringing forth these businesses for historical preservation. My uncle owned a grocery store in the late 40s, early 50s and out in the country, and he bought from Judy Tobacco. He bought from Squirt Bottling and United Grocers. And of course, we all know the Cagliari's. And as a child, my parents used to take us to the Azteca Theater. So, it was a lot of great buildings. And appears that most of these are in President Baines' district. So, if you make the motion, I will be happy to second it.
I'll be happy to make the motion to accept staff's recommendation.
Second.
All right. We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item passes 7-0. Thank you. We will, thank you, staff. We will now move on to our Schedule 130 item, which are the actions pertaining to the Fulton Mall reconstruction project. If we can have staff make the presentation.
Good afternoon, Council President, council members. I'm Scott Mosher, Public Works Director. And the item before you pertains to the Fulton Mall reconstruction project. Just as we begin, I want to say that our project team has been anticipating this day for several years and that many long hours, late evenings, and weekends have been part of that journey. Just quickly, I'd like to recognize our deputy city engineer, Randall Morrison, who's actually not able to be here today, and our deputy city manager, Wilma Quancheckter, for their tireless efforts on the project, and also to extend some great appreciation to our city attorney's office for making sure that we're on solid ground. Staff is recommending that the council take three actions today. One is to find that no subsequent review is required under SEQA, as further detailed in the staff report, based upon council's previous action to certify the EIR back on February 27, 2014. And also to adopt a finding of Class 1 and Class 2 categorical exemptions for the public utilities sewer and water main replacement work under the mall. Second action is to award a construction contract to American Paving Company of Fresno, California, in the amount of $22,422,082.50 for the base bid amount with the five safeguards, as included in the staff report. And the third item is to approve an amendment to our consultant agreement with RHAA for a net increase of $154,272. By way of background, as noted in the report, the notice inviting bids was published on July 10, 2015, for the mall reconstruction and Merced utility projects, which are being completed at the same time. And the advertising process followed all city, state, and federal grant requirements. On October 20, we held the bid opening, and three sealed bid proposals were received and opened in public. American Paving of Fresno, California, was the lowest responsible and responsive bidder with a total bid amount of $23,47,482.50. That lowest bid included the total base bid amount staff's recommending be awarded and a combination of ad alternates totaling $625,400. Staff has excluded the ad alternates from the recommended contract award due to budget constraints. A little bit further on the financials, the DPU-funded component of the award amount is $3.2 million. Good news on that is that the bid cost from American Paving's bid is actually $745,000 less than staff's estimate of that hard construction cost for sewer and water if it were done separately and apart from the Fulton Mall reconstruction project. Also, good news is those DPU-funded components, again, 3.2 million, are under the 3.7 million, which is available in the capital improvement budget adopted by the council for the public utilities department. On the transportation side, which is where the, we do have the shortfall or the gap to be closed, available transportation funding comes through the federal tiger grant, dollars which flowed from the state, and Measure C Transit Oriented Development Funds. And that equals $20,279,900. The total, the components of the bid, as compared to that 20.3 million, the components of the bid, which are to be transportation funded, are roughly 19.2 million. But in addition to that 19.2, the project budget requires an estimated 1.4 million for construction management, which is not only our own staff, but also outside testing labs, environmental monitoring firms, and then also a $2 million construction budget contingency as we go forward. All of that said, the shortfall is $2.3 million at this time. Or said differently, we were looking for a $16.9 million bid on the transportation components of the project, and we are at 19.2, resulting in the need to close a $2.3 million gap. Lastly, on the financials, once the project is complete, Fulton Street will be less expensive to maintain than the pedestrian mall. This analysis was included back in February 2014 with the option summary that came before the council. And in addition, the reconstruction project will address the entire backlog of deferred maintenance and otherwise unfunded repairs on the mall, which are currently needed. In terms of business coordination, I want to assure the council our specifications require the contractor to maintain access to each and every business throughout the project. We will also have biweekly meetings with the businesses to go over both the current activities and also a construction look ahead. And that biweekly meeting, including the contractor, that's on top of weekly construction project meetings with our construction management team, the contractor, and I will be participating as director in those weekly meetings. To outline our path forward, the first step that we're recommending is for the council to award the contract to American Paving with the five safeguards in place. And as your public works director, I'd like to highlight one of those safeguards, that it'd be subjecting the project to the Construction Management Act that the council, this council adopted in May. This, and what would be different with that? That would include a review by the oversight board, a higher performance bond from the contractor, earned value reports, and then also greater council oversight of change orders on the project. Public work staff will work diligently with American Paving to identify those cost-saving measures and to either reduce or eliminate line items in the scope. For example, custom specialized high-end light fixtures, some of the traffic signal work modifications, wayfinding, benches, bike racks, and so on. And I want to emphasize this effort, it'll utilize value engineering and innovative approaches and not negotiation of unit bid prices to ensure that the project costs equal the funds appropriated. And another safeguard is for the city attorney then to verify that those costs are within appropriations. And again, the SEQA NEPA environmental mitigation items will not be impacted with any of the identified reductions. A key component of the project, the conservation, reinstallation of all the artwork, reconstruction of the vast majority of the water fountains, will all remain in the scope. I would just also want to share, again, this is nothing entirely new with the project. Measures to reduce cost or time have been incorporated on previous projects after award through negotiations and discussions with the contractor and the owner. For example, on traditional road, bridge, or pipeline projects, this often involves innovations with respect to how the work is staged and how the traffic is handled. So, again, that's, that's nothing new, and that's something that's in the state process and the city process. Lastly, American Paving, they are a local contractor that has a solid track record with the city. They've delivered many, many projects for us. And we are confident that cost-saving measures can be achieved in order that the actual notice to proceed could be issued in early 2016. With that, I want to introduce the mayor to provide some closing comments and go through some of the safeguards. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Mosher. Good afternoon, Council President and members of the Fresno City Council. It's a pleasure to be with you here today on what is yet another significant moment in the future of our city. Just have to take it all in and look at all of you and breathe a sigh of relief that we've gotten to this point. It is a result of a tremendous amount of It is a result of a tremendous amount of work from the people you see in the chambers today, as well as countless many others who quite literally for decades have championed the cause of downtown Fresno and our historic Main Street. I wanted to reiterate to you information that was in your agenda packet that talks about the five safety measures that we have in place to ensure both financial and construction management practices are sound and that we can move forward in a prudent, thoughtful, strategic, and yet bold manner. First of all, last February, when you all voted to approve the environmental documentation as well as to receive the federal grants, there were a number of safeguards put into Councilmember Brand's motion at that time. We are fully compliant with all aspects of Councilmember Brand's motions, and we see that as a critical safeguard for this project. Secondly, as you know, as standard for the City of Fresno's public works projects, we include in our contracts a non-appropriation clause, which means if we don't have the appropriations for the project, the contract is null and void. So, we've ensured that that remains in this contract, which means that until and unless project expenses and budget appropriations match, the project cannot go forward. To be specific about our intentions to implement that non-appropriations clause, we are also recommending to you all that as you approve this today, you require that the notice to proceed with construction be withheld until the city attorney independently verifies that budget appropriations and project expenses match. The next very significant safeguard that was included in Councilmember Brand's motion is the 10% contingency, which is in place in our project budget. And lastly, we are recommending that this project be subjected to the Construction Management Act, even though it's not required according to that act, but we think it's a good idea to have an independent body of construction management experts overseeing, or internal construction management experts who are overseeing the contractor. Putting all of those actions together, I call it the belt, suspenders, zipper, buttons, and duct tape strategy. We have many safeguards built into the approach that we are recommending that you all take today. If I weren't confident that we could, through value engineering and other cost-saving measures, close the gap between the appropriated funds and the project expense, I would not be here today recommending to you that this contract be awarded. I would make a different recommendation. It would be throw out the bids and start over. But I'm confident that in fact, through value engineering and cost-saving measures, we can close this gap and that it's prudent to proceed. This is why we're here. This is why we, as representatives of the public, ask for their confidence and ask for their support to come into this building and administer not just the routine things that come before you each and every Thursday that absolutely matter and must be handled in a cautious and prudent fashion, but we're also here to look down the road a bit, to consider the future of our community, to evaluate the things that need to be changed, and to ensure that bold action is taken to move our city forward. However, as you all know, it is not my practice to be bold and reckless. I believe that in fact, you can be bold, thoughtful, strategic, prudent, fiscally conservative in bringing positive changes to this city. That's what this action is today, and I urge your support in awarding this contract to American Paving. Thank you.
All right. Well, now I'll take this item out to the public. I have several cards here before me, so what I'm going to do is take the cards in the order in which I've received them. However, if you did not turn in a card, don't worry, you will be given an opportunity to speak once all the cards are exhausted. First up, we have Sean Kikekendall. And if you can just state your name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name's Sean Kikekendall. I'm a resident of Fresno County and a proud member of Carpenter's Local 701. I'm in full support of the Fulton Mall project and urge the city to accept the lowest bidder, which is American Paving. American Paving is locally owned, and it pays living wages and benefits, health benefits to construction workers such as myself and hundreds of others in our, in our valley. American Paving also provides apprenticeship work opportunities to local youth and disadvantaged communities. These facts alone, along with the opening of traffic on the Fulton Mall, will be a boost of, to our economy and to our local business as well. I ask the city council to push this great project forward. Thank you for your time.
Please state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Kayla Franklin, and I am a resident of Fresno City, and this is not my first time I've been here. I am, I'm a member of Carpenter's Local 701, and I strongly support the acceptance of the lowest bidder, American Paving, by the council this afternoon, please. Moving forward with this project will not only benefit construction workers such as myself, but will also benefit our local business and economy. This is the last step before groundbreaking, before groundbreaking. We urge the city council to continue the progress that we have made over the past few years. Millions of dollars have been invested since the 2013 vote to reopen Fulton Mall. The change is already happening, and we can't afford to stop it now. All great cities have great downtowns. We want Fresno to realize its potential. Thank you.
Please state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Yeah, my name is Ramon Perez. I live down here in the, off the Fulton Mall. I have some issues I want to address. One of the issues is that, you know, if we have a road in there, it's going to cause traffic jams, it's going to have pollution, it's going to destroy the trees, the benches, and artwork, and also cause a lot of accidents and maybe deaths because so much traffic. And there's a lot of people that are disabled where I live and stuff that use it as a parkway. Secondly, we have enough parking structures, and we don't need any storefront parking. We could use like trolleys to take the people from their vehicles to the businesses they want to go to, and when they get done with their businesses, they can get the trolley back to their vehicles and be done. And lastly, uh, let's see here. If you put a road through the Fulton Mall, you know, it's gonna, it's gonna, basically you destroy the Fulton Mall, you know, and you guys have roads that you don't even repair that are in the, that are in the downtown area. You know, why you spend more money on roads when you can't fix the roads you already have? Lastly, I mean, in closing, my comment is, you know, we should work together and restore the mall without having to go through because it, the Fulton Mall, the way it is, is, let's see, if you put the road through it, it would absolutely destroy the Fulton Mall and, and the area around it, and you know, the mayor says it's the heart of Fresno, California. Well, if you destroy, if you put a road in, it's going to destroy the whole downtown area. And what happens to the heart of Fresno? It dies. Thank you.
Please state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
My name is Dixie Salazar. I'm an artist, and I have a studio just down the street on six, at 654 Van Ness. To revive downtown, the city appears poised to drive right through a masterpiece. That quote is from a recent Landscape Architecture magazine article on the Fulton Mall. We have something unique and amazing in Fresno and very special. The last appraisal put the mall art valued at $2.3 million, but sadly, the city has lost track of the other art piece, which is the mall itself, a masterpiece of mid-century landscape architecture. The mall was designed by Garrett Ekbo to reflect the valley landscape with a meandering aggregate stonework, water features, and a carefully chosen layout of the artwork. This will be destroyed if a street cuts right down the middle of this art piece. A vote for this road is a vote to destroy art. As to the city's handling of the art during the project, we have gotten nothing but generalities and empty promises. Trust us, they say, we'll take care of it, and I'm having big trust issues with this, and here's why. Number one, the city, the people of Fresno, who by the way own the art, trusted the city for the last 10 to 15 years to take care of the art and safeguard it. Instead, the city has let the mall decay and the art deteriorate. Why? There's no good answer for that. If the value is so great, why are they letting it, why have they let it deteriorate? Three Falkenstein's sit in storage right now because of vandalism. Where was the security? How can we trust that you'll take care of the art now? The mayor says 5 million is set aside for handling the art, yet addendum eight was slipped into the contract bid regulations that now excludes the art renovation and reinstallation from the project's definition as substantially complete. This means the contractor gets paid even if the, and the money, and whether the project is finished or not. If the council approves this, then with that vote of yesterday, then addendum eight will be in the package. We've been promised over and over that guidelines will be considered for preserving the art, and then we get quotes in the B from Councilman Brand saying that, that things involved related to the mall's art and water features could go. This is causing trust issues with me and I'm sure lots of other people. There's no oversight in place that we can guarantee, that can be guaranteed. I'm on my way to Art Hop tonight in my studio downtown. While I'm in the business of making art, I hope I don't leave here knowing that Fresno is in the business of destroying art.
Dan Doyle. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Mr. President, Council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm a member of, or live in the city of Fresno, Dan Doyle again. I'd ask your support of the changes to Fulton Mall. I've been here before chatting about the revitalization of our downtown, which I think is critical. I serve on the Downtown Fresno Partnership Board, and I also am the chairman of Central Valley Community Bank. And as we look at how do we as a bank, in addition to being, having a presence here in the downtown, how do we help other businesses? We really do look at what is the business plan and what is the opportunity for growth for those businesses. It's more than just cash flow. What my business customers, our clients tell us is this is very important to them, and they, and I agree with that, and we want to be able to support in any way we can the growth of our community downtown and throughout the city. So again, I would ask your support. I know these are always difficult decisions, but in running businesses, just like in running a city, that's what we do, and it's important that you weigh these decisions and look at the long term and look also at the business plan for our city, and I think this will be a great support for the growth downtown. We've seen these changes made in other cities, most recent one in Sacramento, who had their K Street Mall closed and just opened it in the last couple of years. So this is not something new. It really is the trend, and there are very few malls left this way. So thank you for allowing me to speak.
Good afternoon. My, my shirt is invisible, but it's orange. Dear Council members, I could not thank you enough when you voted for the opening of Fulton Mall to traffic not too long ago. And as I stated that day before all of you, we will start construction when that vote passes, and the proof is the following. At the Pacific Southwest Building, also known as the Security Bank Building, we have made extensive renovations. We have completed at least, at least two residential floors. We modeled the ballroom, transformed the bank vault to a community room with a private screening room. We updated the subterranean garage and the building's lobby. We are currently renovating five additional floors for residential lofts and commercial use. We are designating an entire floor for creative office space called Workspace, a very innovative concept nowadays in large metropolitan cities, and we are overhauling our entire mechanical and electrical infrastructure. The dynamic improvements to the remainder of the building are scheduled to follow soon after the completion of this current phase. We have attracted multiple businesses such as tech, architectural, produce, and law firms, and we are currently in negotiations for signing long-term leases with them. All these tenants needs direct vehicular access to the building for their energetic businesses and not the current isolated and condemned state of downtown Fresno. People want to move to downtown Fresno when there is the promise of improvement and progress, and downtown Fresno needs to move forward with them. If they learn that the planned improvements for downtown Fresno would not, would not be implemented, they will leave or not come. In addition to the Security Bank Building, I am also a co-owner of five other buildings on Fulton Mall totaling over 375,000 square feet, and I have creative plans to these buildings as well. I urge you to, I urge you, Council members, to accept the lowest bidder, American Paving, and not slow down our tremendous progress. I wouldn't have invested in property on Fulton Mall if there was no plan. The mayor has a great vision of downtown and a successful plan for Fulton Mall. Private money always follows infrastructure and wise planning. These are the elements investors look for. All great cities have great downtowns. I would like to thank you ahead of time for your forward-thinking, leadership, and for believing in Fresno's downtown. I really hope you're encouraged and all the progress that is taking place on Fulton Mall, and I really urge you not to stop this evolution.
So, so just, just out of, out of courtesy for the event today, I know we all have high emotions. I'm going to ask to keep the clapping to as minimal as possible. I have a lot of cards to get through, and I am very sure that you all want to hear us debate the issue up here. So I think that you guys want to make sure that we get there quicker.
Good, good afternoon, Council. My name's Matt Tim. I'm a local tech entrepreneur. I've spent the past eight months basically immersing myself in downtown Fresno, and every Sunday I take my six-year-old daughter and my dog to Peeves. And she always asks me the same question. She says, "Where are all the people?" And I say, "Paisley, it's all about access." And she goes, "You mean cars going down the street?" And I say, "Yes." So, I've lived in many different cities, and I've seen changes across all these different cities, and I'm working on projects actually right now with the mall. Our company, One Sense, is doing the location beacons on all the art pieces in downtown Fresno, and all that stuff can be moved. But it, but again, it comes down to access, and there are many other entrepreneurs like myself that are ready to invest in downtown. I'm actually the co-founder of Workspace Kachidorian, and we're, we're ready to move. So it's pertinent that we, we continue, we accept the American Paving bid, we move forward, and we start innovating in Fresno, and we, and we keep moving forward. I'd hate to see something happen today that doesn't keep us going forward and keep us have progress. So I thank you for your time, and please consider moving forward. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Council. I'm Jay Colin Peterson. I live in Clovis. I am president and CEO of JIT Outsource, and although I live in Clovis, I'm one of Fresno's sons. Matter of fact, I have ties to this city in this very chamber. My father, Chris Peterson, served on this council in the early to late eighties and taught me to respect my city and, and serve my city. So I moved to Clovis for, for a number of reasons. One of the main reasons was because of its business friendliness, but I always promised myself that I would bring business back if I saw a culture shift in the city of Fresno, and I'm seeing that now. I'm a 20-year veteran as a technologist in this, in this community, and I'm, I'm ex- I'm a 20-year veteran as a technologist in this, in this community, and I'm, I'm excited to see the prospect of traffic returning to the Fulton Mall. I would encourage you to accept the lowest bid and put in whatever controls are necessary to bring it in, into, into compliance, into your, into your budgetary needs. In my business, access is, is critical. Access to technology, access to the internet, access to things moving at light speed, and things are not moving at light speed on, on the mall as the way it is. I'm seeing something interesting happening with arts and entertainment happening around downtown Fresno, and the mall is landlocked. All of this activity, all of this excitement, this energy that's building, it's this giant that's waking up, and it's succeeding in spite of the lack of access to the mall, not because of it. And I would encourage you to open up that accessway and allow that energy in, allow it to flow in. It's, it's going to be the lifeblood of your downtown. And I'm an opportunist, and I hope I mean that in a, in a very good way. And I see a very huge opportunity to be successful as a business owner and as an entrepreneur, particularly downtown. So I thank you for listening. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Kirk James. My wife and I just recently moved back to Fresno after living in Los Angeles for the last 15 years, and we saw the potential. Every time we'd come back to visit friends and family, we saw what was going on down here, and we were just really excited about it and decided to pack our bags and move back. And we just recently opened up a retail space on the Fulton Mall next door to Peeves last month, and we are just beyond excited about everything moving forward at the mall. And I just hope that you guys will accept the bids and we can keep the momentum going. Thank you.
Thank you, council members. I'm Bob Gerfield. I live in Los Angeles, but I've owned property on the Fulton Mall for over 30 years. And I'm here to urge you to please accept the bid of American paving to rebuild the Fulton corridor. And the work should commence as soon as possible. I hope we'll see it this winter. I want to thank you for your past support for plans to revitalize downtown Fresno by opening the Fresno, the Fulton corridor pedestrian malls to automobile traffic and by restoring the art that's so unique to our community. This forward-thinking work of government provides increased access and services to the community. Once the modernized infrastructure is in place, the private sector property owners will renovate their buildings to attract new business, and it causes the existing businesses to improve. And these businesses stimulated by the increased competition will draw new customers and clients to downtown, thereby increasing the economic activity of the Fresno community. And as owner of these three buildings on the northeast corner of Fulton and Mariposa, I will personally invest several millions of dollars to upgrade these buildings. I'm in touch with business owners in the community and from further away. People who want to lease vacant space in my buildings, once they know that the new streets are really going to happen, they want a date certain for completion, and it can't be soon enough. Lenders have told me they'd provide the construction funds once I have the new leases in place, and that show that increase in the building's value and income. So I ask you today to take the final step to actualize the revitalization. Please accept the bid of American paving, and let's rebuild Fulton Street. Thank you very much.
Hello. Thank you for your time. I'm Derek Franks, 1800 Tulare Street in downtown, and I'm the general manager for the Fresno Grizzlies, the 2015 AAA national champion Fresno Grizzlies, that is. And I want to thank you, council, for all the support at the ballpark this year, and especially during the playoffs when we were making that run. I saw you guys out there wearing your jerseys, and it means a lot. The synergy that we had going in downtown was something really special. And I was told by Branch Ricky, the president of the PCL, that we, Fresno, our club, outdrew all the other teams that made the playoffs in the league. So we've got something really special, and we've got something going on downtown that can really be big. And really, our business is about creating memories, because it's great to win championships, but at the core, we're, we're, our business is creating memories. And I think, I know council members, Capriolio and Olivier certainly have had some great memories with their, their sons at the ballpark that they will tell you about. And I talk to people all the time about what they like about going to our ballpark, or really to any ballpark or any sporting event, anywhere. And if you ask people, if you ask people what they like about going to a San Francisco Giants game, I guarantee you that you'll hear people talk about going to Momos, or going to Pete's Tavern, or going to the Public House. Because really, the experience of going to any sporting event or any event really starts from the time you park your car, and that walk and that experience starts the minute you park and get out of your car. And for us right now, the experience is parking your car, going to the ballgame, and going home. And that is a major challenge for our business in downtown Fresno. And for me, I've been fortunate to be working at the, with this ball club since 2004, and you can, you can feel now that the progress is, is being made and that we're close to something very special in downtown. And so today I would urge you all to accept the bid from American paving, and let's keep moving forward and keep the progress going so that we can have one of the best downtowns in, in all of California and anywhere, and we can unapologetically say that we're going to just keep pushing forward and being the best no matter what. Thank you for your time today.
Mr. President, council members, thank you for your time. My name is Rick Rousch. I own T.W. Patterson Building, 2014 Tulare. I appeared to this council many, many years ago, and I was one of the three founders for the Fresno Grizzly baseball club, and having the vision with this council to build a stadium. Today, we are national champions because of the work the council did. I also applaud this council for having the courage and the vision to see, to also make hard decisions, just like the prior council used to and did. The economics, the sales tax, property tax, increased revenue, the foreign investors, the investors from all across the country that are coming here every day, every week, every month, and looking and buying because they too believe, like you have, that this is the right decision. I applaud the mayor for her vision. I've worked for many, many years under a lot of mayors. This one is very, very special, and you guys are very, very special council members having the courage to follow this leadership and make this happen, because Fresno is not a no, it is a yes, and we are worthy of this. And this is a great opportunity and a great time in all of our lives. And I represent over 30 businesses, and I have over 400 people in and out of our building every day, and all they keep asking is, "What about access? Why do we have to park so far away? Why do we have to walk?" And all the retail people have 20,000 square feet on the bottom floor that I can't properly fill because of, without front access and parking. Whether you talk to Starbucks, whether you talk to any other major retailer, they need the front access, parking. And that is why I applaud you again for your courage, your foresight, insight, and delivery of knowing what's right, and thank you for doing this, and I encourage you to follow, accept the bid presented. Thank you.
Good afternoon, and thank you, Aaron Blair, 845 Fulton Mall, Downtown Fresno Partnership. I think you understand our stance on behalf of the P bid and the property owners and small businesses within our district. We are in full support of this. It's something that we've been waiting for, for a long time, and we are just grateful that you're entertaining this, and we are grateful for your support in advance. And we have shirts for you all after. Thanks.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Craig Shartan. I'm the owner of Peeves Public House at 1243 Fulton Mall. We are the only business with a Fulton Mall address, open after 6:00 PM, seven nights a week. I have invested my entire life savings in that business. I have invested in a home in the Lowell neighborhood, and that's the theme that I think you're beginning to hear today, is that people are willing to invest. I've been willing to invest. Others will be willing to invest as long as they continue to see steady, reliable progress, and the commitment from our city on the kinds of things that cities by necessity are the only ones they can do, providing good traffic circulation, good infrastructure, all of the things that happen in the public realm. So that's what you're considering today, making that investment in that space between the buildings. And on the other side, we have people investing in homes. You've heard from people that are investing in small businesses like mine, people that are investing in buildings, and then even people that are considering large investment. All of this is beginning to happen. We know that we've had over $60 million of investment since you first opened, voted to open the street, and we would expect much, much more after we have our groundbreaking and eventually get to celebrated our ribbon cutting. So you are doing the things that are leading to investment. Please, I encourage you to keep doing that, accept the low bid, and we can wait for the additional investment to continue to pour in. The private sector is speaking. Thank you.
Doug Rickert, 1458 West Shenault. Good afternoon. In my previous appearances speaking out against the destruction of the Fulton Mall, I've addressed my remarks to the council as a whole. Today, I'd specifically like to address my remarks to this contract and to my district representative, Councilmember Brandow, for he faces the greatest quandary on this vote. While you may have grave questions about the Fulton Mall, the contract before you-
Doug, please direct your, your comments to me, not a single council member, so you can, you can talk to me not directly as Councilmember Brandow. I'm sorry.
Okay, well, these are, these are for him. While you may have grave concerns about the pedestrian mall, the contract before you exactly the type of government financial boondoggle you campaigned against, and your constituency elected you to prevent. The lowest bid was 32% over the estimate. The mayor admits a funding shortage of $2.5 million. The net city cost listed in your financial impact statement that they've provided you now stands at just shy of $26 million, which is the first time anyone has seen or mentioned that number. And as part of today's action, you have to approve even more money for the consultants because even that went over budget. Now, I'll be honest with you, our political philosophies don't match up any more than a Dodger fan and a Giants fan opinion on the best team. And I'm certainly reinforcing the "politics makes strange bedfellows" adage by asking you to follow your political tenants, not mine. But you have always appeared to be a stand-up man, one whose deed follows his word and would stay true to his ideals. That's why the mayor lied to you 18 months ago when you repeatedly asked her about the tiger grants relation to the stimulus package. She repeatedly said it wasn't related, but it is. Please, don't take just my word for it. Google tiger grants and read the Wikipedia entry for yourself. Perhaps lie is too strong a word, perhaps inaccurate is better, but her inaccuracies about one of your concerns must call into question her other facts, especially the financial ones. Councilmember Brandow, this is a very tough vote for you. It certainly would be easy to do the political expedient thing, except the wink and nods made saying the conditions for contract approval have been met, and vote for the contract. But the bid is over by 20, is over $20 million. There are still legal challenges. They did not create a Plan B to bring it under budget, and all bids were initially rejected by the staff. For a traditional politician who wants this project, this is not a problem. For the end, for them, the ends justify the means. But I believe you don't want to be known as that type of representative. There are serious fiscal concerns with this contract. It will take a lot of courage to stick to your ideals when there is this much political pressure to ignore the money questions and just vote yes. Please stay to your beliefs and don't approve this contract. Thank you.
Diane Hanslich, 730 East Lansing Way, Fresno. I believe in the Fulton Mall. I feel this proceeding is premature. How can you approve a bid that is 32% over the city's original budget without knowing what the cuts will be to the project? We need transparency on funding sources. Are all funding sources confirmed? The state grants listed in the council, council action do not exist in the signed tiger grant agreement with the Department of Transportation. Also, the stated funding amounts do not cover the lowest bids. Will a new EIR be needed with the changes that are being made? You are accountable. This decision will affect the future of Fresno. Previous administrations have made some regrettable decisions, fiscal decisions in the past. Because of addendum, addendum eight, I feel you should reject this action. Thank you.
Stephen Minzle. Do we have Stephen, Stefan Minzle? Stephen Minzle? Okay.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Renee Reese, and I am from Fresno, born and raised. I left Fresno for about five years, little while ago, and when I returned back to Fresno in 2012, my now husband and I decided that we really wanted to become involved in the revitalization of downtown. After about a year and a half of doing a lot of work with the revitalization of downtown, we decided, let's put our money where our mouth is. So we ended up purchasing a home this past summer on Huntington Boulevard. So we're really, really excited to have the 93702 zip code, and we are really, really excited when friends and family from out of town come to visit, since we have no furniture yet. We have folks stay at the hotel downtown, and we really enjoy taking them to the mall and taking them to Peeves. And we're really, really encouraging the council to invest in opening the downtown mall, opening Fulton Mall, and invest just as we've invested in downtown with our own personal money. We're really, really excited and honored that you are considering this right now and encourage you to accept American paving bid. Thank you.
Good afternoon, council. Kyle Schmidt. I'm here to speak in opposition of you awarding this contract at this time. I've been attending a lot of the, kind of the Fulton corridor specific planning meetings and a lot of the design-related meetings for this, as well as the Mariposa Plaza project. And I did come to it with a perspective that the pedestrian mall could be a viable option for, you know, being part of the revitalization of downtown Fresno. I don't think there's a silver bullet in any of this, that the downtown cannot be revitalized without the mall being opened. And I think there was a lot of creative ideas being brought forward, including Mr. Quintero's idea of not opening the entire mall but keeping a portion pedestrian. And again, that might help with some of the construction budget problems. Continually in the process, creative ideas were brought forward, but there wasn't an interest from the project team or the administration in critically looking at those, and the preserve the Fulton Mall option was always set up as a straw man argument of that is the do-nothing option. You want to preserve the pedestrian mall, you don't believe in downtown. The whole campaign of, "I believe in downtown, tear out the mall," was put as synonymous. I can say that I'm a strong believer and a strong supporter of downtown, but I think the pedestrian mall could be a viable option. With the, the design proposal that we have, the lack of bicycle infrastructure, whether bike lanes or bike racks, wayfinding, signage being removed, these are all big concerns. As well as me being in the architecture and construction industry, lowest bid, and especially taking the lowest bid and then negotiating down further is a very risky business as far as cost overruns, and you get into a very, very, very- far as cost overruns, and you get into a very, very, very fine, detailed construction contract negotiation where anything that's not specifically spelled out can become a change order, and you become risk of this project going way over budget, way over time. So I have that concern. On top of that, looking at the existing business owners that have made the Fulton Mall their home for some of them decades, many of them minority-owned family businesses, I don't think there's enough safeguards in here to not only maintain that their business will be viable while the construction's going, but they won't be displaced by building owners that now feel that they can achieve higher rents without first investing in their buildings and making them better. So I think there's, we should look at kind of some critical options of the business owners that have made their home, the Fulton Mall, for so long, should be given some rent control-type options of making sure that they're a permanent fixture of the mall rather than been displaced. Because there is so many vacancies, there's lots of places that people go in, but we want to make sure that people that have made their homes there for so long are not at risk. So thank you.
Liz Sanchez.
Resident here in Fresno, born and raised, and getting ready to open up our second location downtown in the Fulton Mall. I'm probably the most broke entrepreneur in here, probably more broke than Craig. I've poured everything into the, to my next location. When you talk about life savings, everything going into it, it's all there. Everything is on the table. And the only thing I know is, what we have now is not working. Plain and simple. So changes do need to happen, and I'm a strong believer of changes and moving forward. I've done my research on several different levels of this project, and I believe in what we're doing. I believe in what the power and the information of what Craig and his team has done, what the mayor has done, and several other people behind it. So I'm just one of those people that encourages you to accept the bid for American Paving. Thank you.
Mehmet Noyan.
Good afternoon, members of the council, Mr. President. My name is Mehmet Noyan. I reside at 685 West Duluvio in Fresno. I'm a 45-year resident of Fresno, and I call this my home, and I love living here, and I love Fresno and everything about it. About a year ago, my partner, Terrence Fraser, and I were awarded by this council the exclusive negotiating rights for the south end of the Fulton Mall, which includes the former Gottschalk's Building, the Berkeley Building, a vacant lot at Innuan Fulton, and also the parking lot for the Grizzlies. We've been working very diligently behind the scenes. We've made applications. We've done a number of analysis on different types of projects for each one of those nodes, and they're all predicated upon one thing, and that one thing is Fulton Mall becoming Fulton Street. We can't do this investment, this development, without a street being there. And I liken Fulton Street as our main artery in our body, and that artery is plugged up and it needs major surgery. So I would ask you to please award American Paving the low bid, allow them to value engineer, and bring this project back, and let's stop talking and let's start building. Thank you.
Don Scordino.
Hi, I'm Don Scordino. I'm a lifelong resident, born and raised here in Fresno. I remember the Fulton Mall going in and all the excitement that day, and I remember my dad saying it was the job of the city to put the infrastructure in, and now all the businesses will come. Well, what happened is all the businesses left, and unfortunately, we have a 50-year history of that. And the city cannot make anybody, any business come here. They tried that many years ago by telling Macy's, you have to go to the Fulton Mall, and Macy's wouldn't do it. So for 50 years, it hasn't happened. I believe that if we open up Fulton Mall and we get past the details that may be boggling down some, but if we can get past that today and start working on it, it's going to be a benefit for all of Fresno, not just downtown Fresno. So I would strongly urge you to vote yes on this and get moving on it. Thank you very much.
Travis Alexander.
Hello, Nancy Waitlow, 804 East Fedora Avenue, Fresno. Been here since '61, I think it is, so a long time. And I was an intern here in the Public Works Department when I was going to Fresno State when the mall was being built. Maybe I have a, you know, kind of a vested interest. I really, really liked it, and I still like it. And I would like Fresno to have this special thing going on for us downtown instead of just another little puny street going down in between buildings. People aren't going to really stop and look at the artwork if they're not on their feet and close to it. I'm not going to be able to have a place to bring my grandchildren from Denver, you know. I mean, there's not too much to do. They're coming this year, and I was thinking, ah, the skating rink downtown, yay, you know, and just the mall, you know. It's a green space downtown. It's important that we keep it. I'm sorry, all these big bucks are coming to be thrown, you know, into making it the same as every place else. Why can't we do something good and different and keep it and make it work? We didn't make it work after we put it in. We just went north, and everybody went north. Okay, it's not going to be a marvelous retail place, I don't believe. Perhaps we could put the money, get some more from somewhere else, I don't suppose we can just transfer it over, but open up the backs of these businesses so people can go on a nice street behind them and see where things are, and park, and go in, and then they go out the front, and they stroll along the mall under great, big, shady trees. How long does it take for a little tiny tree, you know? We lost the Met. We lost the courthouse. I mean, going really way back. We almost lost the administration building at City College. Let's keep our interesting, good things that we have here and make them better. We can do that, and people will come. You people that want, you know, people to come down there and use your spaces and stuff, I want that too, but I think it can be done this other way, and I would like you to consider it. Thank you.
Jerry Bill.
Jerry Bill, 708 East Beverly Way in Fresno. 45-year resident of Fresno, which is long enough to have seen some other boondoggles entered into by the city of Fresno. And unfortunately, this project has all the earmarks of another one of those boondoggles. I hope you're all aware of that. Now, you know, trust has been mentioned up here. There is a lack of trust in the city. You should be aware of that. And why is there a lack of trust? Well, for many reasons. But one is, you know, the staff recommendation that, against accepting the bid, that miraculously got changed to support the bid, probably because of a backroom deal, that's what it would look like. We know there are people who stand to make millions of dollars off of this deal at taxpayers' expense, and so, of course, they have a way of lobbying in the backrooms to get things their way. The city, the citizens of the city are distrustful of processes like that. Now, this, this project also appears to me sort of a classic bait-and-switch kind of thing, because initially, the project was to include certain amenities that now apparently are going to be eliminated as cost savings. So what are we going to do? We're going to end up paying more and getting less for it. What about that makes any sense? Now, with regard to the artwork, the city says it'll eventually be put back, but put back when? If the project is substantially completed and the contractor paid off and the artwork hasn't been restored, and then the city runs out of money at that point, what happens then? It just doesn't get restored? You know, I'm concerned about the lack of the bicycle racks and the bicycle lanes and the signage, and especially the artwork, and I don't trust this council to make sure that all those things are included in this project. So I urge you to reject this bid and consider other alternatives, which would include revitalizing the area as a pedestrian mall, not as an ordinary street in Fresno like every other street. Okay, thank you.
Sarah Hedgepath Harris.
My name is Sarah Hedgepath Harris. I am legal counsel for the Downtown Fresno Coalition. I represent them in the pending legal matters before the federal court and the state court that challenged the environmental review process that was engaged in by the city of Fresno and Caltrans regarding this project. And I wanted to make sure that you understood the consequences of proceeding with this project before the resolution of those, of the pending litigation, and to seek direction from the council that ensures that the notice to proceed does not issue until those cases are resolved. Because if that doesn't happen, if it isn't clearly, if there isn't clear direction from the council today, then I will be forced to go into court, into both federal court and state court, to obtain an injunction to maintain the status quo pending resolution of those cases. This is what could possibly happen if you proceed with construction, if you start demolition, and either one of those lawsuits is resolved against the city. If the sequoia lawsuit is resolved against the city, the court will issue a writ directing you to set aside project approval, and it will render void all of your subsequent entitlement approvals. If you've already started or commenced with any kind of construction, it is within the power of the court to direct you to repair and unwind everything that you have done because you have not complied with the law before you've done it. So the litigation right now, the status of the litigation is this. The federal court proceedings, the hearing has already happened, the case is fully briefed, and we're waiting for the federal court to issue its opinion. That could happen any day. The state court proceeding, the matter has been fully briefed, we're awaiting it being scheduled for hearing and the ultimate opinion of the appellate court. Because this is a sequoia matter, it is entitled to being expedited. It has priority. I anticipate, based upon my experience in the appellate court, that that will be set within the next, hearing will be set within the next 60 days, and that it's anticipated that the final opinion would be 90 to 120 days. So we're not talking about a long period of time for delay. But I want to make sure that this council makes clear its direction, that the notice to proceed does not issue until the courts have rendered opinions in that case. Again, I will be forced to seek injunction, which will increase the already high costs of this litigation, so I'm hoping that we can avoid those additional costs by having direction from this council to delay the notice to proceed. Thank you.
Al Smith.
I'm Al Smith. I'm the president and CEO of the Greater Fresno Area Chamber of Commerce, 2331 Fresno Every year, we have a gathering of our former chairs and presidents at a luncheon to sort of bring them up to speed as to what the chamber is doing. Our next one is next week. And during the course of that luncheon every year, we always go around and ask them, hey, what did you do the year that you were the chair or you were the president? And we'll have 19 people around that table, and they'll tell us about how, well, when I was the chair of the Chamber of Commerce, my project was this. And if you go around, there'll be both four, five, or six of them who will obviously say the year I was president or the chair, my project was downtown revitalization. And that has gone on for now, some 19 people, and we've gone through three administrations in this city, fighting the good fight for trying to revitalize downtown. This council and this administration has added more bustle to this effort than anybody I have seen in my past history, and we should respect that and appreciate what they've done. They have put in tons and tons of work. A lot of people have been collaborating with this project, a lot of surveys have been done, to try to come up with a solution to make it happen. And the thing that keeps dawning on me as I think about the mall is, there's an old showbiz expression for movies, it was an artistic success, but it was a box office failure. And unfortunately, on paper, the mall looked great, but it has not proven to be anything successful. And for one reason is that people need to go there to shop. And if I want to go there to shop, I have to park about a block away from the mall, get out of my car, go to an area that I may have never been in before, walk over there and see what's there. If I can drive down that street and I see something that's interesting to me, I can find a parking spot, pull right in, and enjoy whatever amenities there are. So we are so close, we're just that far away, and it is a, but there are the overrun concerns. I think there are manageable elements of that, but I don't think that we should undo seven hard, hard years of what we've done. In closing, I think about the Charles Schultz peanut cartoon where Lucy is always pulling the football out from underneath Charlie Brown. I hope that, my hope is that the city is the Charlie Brown, and the council does not become Lucy. Don't pull that football out. Thank you.
Joyce Aiken.
My name is Joyce Aiken, and I am confused. My confusion comes over this budget, the budget for this project. I do a pretty good job of handling my own budget at home, but I can't quite get this clear. I see in the Tiger Grant that the funding comes in just a little under $16 million from the federal government. Then there's additional sources of local funds for $3,800,000 that includes Major C money of $1,800,000. Then there's $250,000 from PBI. This all comes into just less than $20 million. Then there is council action with a motion from Councilman Brand that a list of conditions must be met prior to any construction. One of them is that the construction not exceed $20 million. With the budget breakdown of still the same amount for the Tiger Grant, $1.8 million for Major C, and $250,000 PBI, plus $3 million from state grants. Now, the Tiger Grant and the PBI money are the same. Now, we're short of local funds by $2 million, with an additional $3 million coming from the state. My question is, do we really have $3 million coming from the state? It would be a help to me, and I think to the public, to have more transparency in the funding for this project. I would ask you and hope that you would delay the vote on this project until we get some clarification on this. And finally, last Tuesday, Councilman Brand said, that I came, I read from the newspaper, that some of the stuff in the budget was overly padded, and there are some that could be cut. They include light fixtures, concrete, and asphalt work, and then I quote... They include light fixtures, concrete, and asphalt work, and then I quote, "A lot of costs involved related to the art and water features." We keep getting assurances from the city that the art is going to be protected, but when you look for cuts, it seems as though the arts are the ones that are being threatened. Thank you.
Preston Prince. Preston Prince. Mary Jo Fitchhorn.
Hello, I've never been in front of the city council before, but it's very, very interesting, and I love being here. I love the mall, the Fresno City Mall, I went there in 1960 with my mother, my mother discovered Margaret Hudson there, and I did too. Of course, my mom was an artist. My name is Mary Jo Birkin Fitchhorn, and I love Fresno. I have, I moved here when I was a sophomore in high school, I went to Fresno High, I went to Fresno City College, Fresno State, and then became a teacher, and moved to Stockton, taught there one year, moved to North Sacramento and taught there three years, moved back here and taught a couple of years, and went into school library work. My mother was an artist, she was a member of the art museum, art center at that time. She helped fund the new art center or the art museum, the new buildings. It's a beautiful place, I'm sorry about the Met, she didn't like the Met, she called it an old, I don't know what, but she was an art center person. I just, I believe in the, I believe in the human quality, and I believe that people that use their hands and make beautiful things are important, and I believe the things they make are important. And I do not believe that we should start tearing up something that's going to cost a whole lot of money. I don't believe that. And also, I know young people are important, I understand that, way, way important. And they made investments downtown, I understand that. Why did they make investments downtown when the mall was already there? The mall was there first. Why did they do that? Now they want to tear it up. I don't think that's right, and I just beg you not to let this happen. Thank you.
Bruce Morris.
Council members, President. My name is Bruce Morris, I grew up in Fresno, I've been a director of the Downtown Association many moons ago. I do not live in Fresno anymore, I've lived in Stockholm, Sweden for the last 10 years. It's impressive to see the potential investment, all the investors that say, "We can do this if, we can do this if." I've heard that before. It appears that the council is sitting on a very unstable mass of financial and legal quicksand if you move forward today. There have been arguments, many good sounding arguments, for the destruction of a national treasure, not just the art, but the actual park of the Fulton Mall. Thank you for those who helped save the old administration building, a 35-year fight against a board that was hell-bent on tearing that down and putting a parking lot where the old administration building is. Both my father and grandfather taught in that building, many of you attended that in school in that building. We've all had experiences on the Fulton Mall. It can be a success if you don't rip it out, cast all the art into a corner someplace where it was never intended to be. Most of the art was created to be in the places where they are. I understand that 90, 80, up to 90% of the trees are going to be gone. It will be again as it was before it was a mall, a windy, hellhole, hot place to be, before the oasis of the Fresno Mall was installed. Think again. This is a railroad job of somebody that needs to have it done before they leave office. This happened in Stockholm, we now have a really, really bad proposal for a place called Sluson, a cloverleaf that is going to be replaced, a cloverleaf, a 1930s design, cloverleaf, traffic design, which will be replaced by T crossings underground because somebody wanted to make their political mark before they left office. They lost the election. What will happen, what will happen when this current mayor loses the election and her majority is gone?
Daniel Delgado.
Lower the, give him the mic, can you lower that for him?
My name is Daniel Delgado, I've been a resident here practically all my life. My dad was a P O W in the Death Marches Battalion, he is disabled. This close. My dad is a P O W from the Death Marches Battalion in the Philippines, and he got wounded, he got shot, he's disabled. My mom built battleships in San Franciscals while my dad was fighting. Anyway, I got struck in my polio at two and a half years old. I remember the Fulton Mall, I remember the streets, I remember most getting hit many times with all the traffic. I remember my mom and my dad used to have close calls because I was in a wheelchair or in crutches. The day came when the Fulton Mall came up, that was the biggest thing, and it was so beautiful because a lot of disabled persons came down there in the Fulton Mall, and they could do their thing, blind, senior citizen, it was beautiful. But, American haven, I think it's a good thing that they're doing what they want to do, they want to do something right for the Fulton Mall, but they could do it in a better way by making the way it is now and improving it. What I see, everybody talk about these beautiful things, they're going to invest in everything else, well, they can invest in now. They never once talked about the disabled. I've been hearing it, and it was by accident I came here, it was a friend of mine that brought me here. I just came in Selma about a guy that got hit by a car, became a quadriplegic, and he has an electric wheelchair goes back. I doubt it, they're going to come down to the Fulton Mall because it would be really packed. We've got the Californian Hotel, and we've got the Master Tower, a lot of disabled. Once that road gets built, it'll be packed, full of people with wheelchairs. You are going to get a lot of lawsuits guaranteed, you are. I think you need to improve it, and I think the guy's going to make a big mistake, but you could still use the American, look how beautiful they look, all in orange, look at that. And I'm just a simple person. I work with a disabled, and I donate medical equipment, and I still continue to help them on the Master Tower and the Californian. But anyway, I don't make speeches, but I'm glad I came. Anyway, that's about it.
Richard Renteria.
Good afternoon, Council, my name is Richard B. Renteria, I live in District 3, the mall's location. I hear a lot of talk about how everybody's going to do this and do that, once we put a street in, because they don't want to walk, it's too far, I got to park. I'm afraid I'm going to walk in the neighborhood, I don't know where I belong. If you look at the surrounding environment of the Fulton Mall, you'll notice that none of the streets are in good shape. Yet you want to add one more street because you think we need one more street. We have a pollution problem, and we might have a problem with people who don't want to walk, or ride a bike, or use transit. I think the Tiger Grant, the qualifications that were submitted to receive the grant was done incorrectly, the Tiger Grant should have been applied to helping our city fix our streets, improve our transit system, our bikeways, our walkways. One street's going to make a difference, it's going to bring business to your business that you have on the Fulton Mall, because somebody can park in front of your store or your business. Well, honestly, the street's going to be so wide that you're going to end up walking anyway, so it doesn't matter. I think the bottom line is the mall of Fresno was designed for people to get out and walk. There's good examples, East 4th Street in Cleveland is a good example of what you can do with pedestrians. The street is not going to be the answer to the problem we have at the mall. What we have, the problem with the mall is that we've had the leadership over and over say they're going to salvage it, and we're going to do this, and they're going to do that. Albert Einstein said it real clear, he says, "Nothing's going to change if you keep doing it the same way." I paraphrase him what he says, but I think the mistake is being made that it's going to be a street and it's going to save downtown Fresno. Leadership, honesty, trustworthy, vigor, love for the city will save downtown Fresno, not somebody saying they're going to do this. I've seen the buildings downtown, if you're an owner of downtown Fresno building, clean your building up, make the mall look presentable. We have one mall in the state of California, it's the best-looking mall if we really made it look right, a walking mall, nobody else has one, but we do. Thank you.
Danny Sandoval.
Good afternoon, City Council, my name is Danny Sandoval, and I am a resident of Fresno, California. I actually moved here when I was three years old with my family because my father thought that Fresno was a better place than Stockton, California, we could all agree. And, you know, I grew up my whole life, I had a great childhood, and I grew up in the northern part of Fresno, in 1999 area, so I had a great childhood. But growing up, I always saw downtown as a scary place, I never wanted to go there. I remember going there for my first time at the Grizzlies Stadium, I was, I think, eight years old, and they had the young Cal Ripken kids walk across the field, and it was an experience like I'd never, you know, experienced before. And ever since then, I always loved, you know, downtown just because of Grizzlies Stadium. And I think now with, you know, Grizzlies now being national champs, it's awesome to be, you know, be a part of Fresno, and I think that with this Fulton Mall project, it's going to allow, you know, more businesses and more attractions, not just for everybody, but for more particular, the younger demographic, you know, I'm speaking for the younger generation because I believe that if we, you know, bring this project and it gets approved, that a lot of things are going to happen. You know, I work real close with, I'm real close with Terrence Fraser, who actually has multiple projects that he wants to get started, but he says, "Once this project gets started, it's going to spark, you know, a lot of momentum downtown," and I think that with this project being approved, it can, you know, allow a lot of new things to happen, and I think that, you know, Fresno, within these next five to 10 years, is going to be put on the map, and a lot of people are going to know about us, and I just, I really hope that you guys make a great decision and improve this deal. Thank you.
All right, I think I have one final card. James Koch.
My name is Jim Cook, the spelling is K-O-C-H, that's fine, it's, 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 you don't, that doesn't sound like that, Jim Cook. I'm a owner of a building downtown at 1445 Tuolumne Street, the corner of Tuolumne and F Street. I'm speaking today in a neutral response to the proposal. I want to make sure there's several things are considered. I did serve for nearly 10 years as the treasurer for the Downtown Association, involved activities on the mall, and fundraisers and what have you to coordinate the business owners of the mall with the Downtown Association, a private nonprofit organization. The Fresno Mall has provided and been active as a, for activities of the Latino community. The Latino community has had great success in the use of the mall for the activity, for the fundraisers and the celebration of events such as the Cinco de Mayo and the Fiesta Paternales. These activities primarily have centered on the intersection of Mariposa and the Fulton Mall. The Mariposa and Fulton Mall has a somewhat of a park area, as you're familiar with that, with a stage that provides a mostly inadequate, but small, but still successful, best point for these celebrations. We must consider that these celebrations represent a growing part of our community and a growing celebration of the Hispanic history, the Latino history in this community, which is so important to us. That element, I want to make sure that you continue to, that you view and include in your proposal. The second element is the beauty of the design of the downtown, of which Mariposa, of which the Mariposa Mall is only one part of the Fulton Mall and Kern Street and the Merced Mall, a beautiful design in which the downtown is tied together from E Street on the west to the U Street on the east. This coordination tied together principally by the Mariposa Mall, I'm sure that you realize that you could take a wheelchair and one with a completion, as I understand of the downtown center or downtown high-speed rail, that the high-speed, that you could take a wheelchair over the tracks because they're coordinating the east side and the west side of the high-speed rail. So you can take a wheelchair from E Street all the way to U Street, going through this building here, going through the city hall, going right through there, it ties the whole city together. Look at this thing as an overall plan, not just as a Fulton Mall, include the Fulton Mall and make sure that you're including all that. The third thing, as nobody's mentioned, is the high-speed rail. These people are not going to have cars, they're going to want, they're going to want a park or access to the downtown.
Thank you, Mr. Cook, thank you. All right, those are all of the cards that I have. If anyone would like to speak on this item, just come down to the lectern, state your name and address for the record.
Hello, I forgot to fill out a card. My name is Robert Gorrell, and I'm a paralegal that lives on the Fulton Mall, and our family came out here in 1963, and so I saw the mall built, and it was an exciting time when that mall was built, and I just can't, can't believe that, what I've been hearing, there have been redevelopment meetings downtown on the mall about how it's going to be when they put the streets in, it's going to be very pedestrian-friendly, it's not going to be fast-moving traffic. It's a, it's a good thing, and so I'm here to support the initiative. Thank you.
Thank you. If anyone else would like to... Anyone, if anyone else would like to make a comment on this item, please step down to the lectern, state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Good afternoon, council president, members of the council. My name is George Vasquez. I've been associated at the law firm of Yara Karazi and Clausen, located at 2000 Fresno Street, right on the Fulton Mall. And Mr. Karazi asked me to come down here and speak in support of the council's proposed actions on the Fulton Reconstruction Project. He wished he could have been here himself, but he was stuck in deposition today, as often happens in our profession. Mr. Karazi owns the three-story building located at the corner of Fulton Street and Fresno Street, where he operates our law firm on the top two floors of the building. The bottom floor of the building currently has approximately 6,000 square feet of unused space, which has been difficult to rent out due to the current business environment of the Fulton Mall. If the Fulton Mall Reconstruction Project proves to be as successful as other projects in other cities similar to this project, the unused space would be ideally located for potential businesses to come in here and probably much easier to rent out. As a downtown business and property owner, Mr. Karazi supports the Fulton Mall Reconstruction Project and believes the sooner the project begins, the better. Thank you.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Christopher Rocha. I work in downtown Fresno and recently moved downtown to the new Brio on Broadway apartments. I am a Fresno, part of the Fresno leading young professionals and am in the Downtown Academy. And I think, right now, we have such a fire, especially in the class that I'm in, of young, 30 young people. It's just on fire. We have such a passion for downtown and for the revitalization. And it's, we're all kind of betting on Fulton Street coming back. I myself, I do appreciate the art. I appreciate historical buildings. I have a blog that I write about our historical buildings. But at the end of the day, we need to revitalize and we need to be successful again. And downtown deserves its comeback, and I think we can have that, have that. So I hope that you go ahead and approve this. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mary Coombs, and I live in Fresno. I appreciate the chance to talk with you about this issue. I feel very strongly that we should save it, not pave it. We've got plenty of streets and paved spaces in Fresno. That's not what we need more of. I know many of you are supporters of parks. This area of town has extremely few parks. It's actually on one of the lists of the most underserved places in the country in terms of parks. This transformation of the mall from a park with a playground into a street makes that situation only worse. I'm concerned about the sort of shenanigans with numbers. When you read documents and somebody tells you it says something other than what it says, it's very difficult to trust that. What I trust is what is in writing. I hope that the council members will have that same attitude. I think that we would all take that attitude toward serious matters in our own lives. I know that Councilmember Brandow has expressed concern about cost overruns. I hope that you will continue to stick with your position and consider the documentation. The documentation probably tells the truth. It's the only thing that is legal, is only, the only thing that is binding. I have a great concern that we would replace the biggest existing design of Garrett Ekbo in the world, that we would pave that over with a street. I have a great concern that we would eliminate fully grown trees that shade that space. That's, those are gone. No money for park benches now, we're talking about. Lack of money for lighting. There's been a lot of concern about the condition of the mall. But if we simply withdraw funding for these additional improvements, we're making it worse, actually, rather than better. One last thing, I just wanted to mention that it's, this place is eligible for, it's on the list for National, the National Registry of Historic Places because it's so special. We don't have any others that I know of in Fresno. So let's keep this. Let's improve it. We could certainly write a grant, a Tiger Grant, for improvement of this pedestrian mall. That's what most Tiger Grants are granted for. I urge you to at least delay this vote. This is not a time to go forward, certainly in the direction of pavement. Thank you very much.
If we have any other people that would like to comment, just come on down to the lectern, state your name and address for the record.
Hello, I am Andrew Standriff, and I work here at Fresno City Hall. My family and I moved here to Fresno not too long ago, within the last few years. And so far, have really enjoyed it. My father and I go down to the Fulton Mall fairly frequently, you know, Taco Thursdays, take a moment to have a break from the day and enjoy a lunch together. And I enjoy the Fulton Mall when I go down to it. It has an atmosphere that really can't be found in many other places. And I wonder, it's, I guess it's a concern for me. The, the area is experiencing a lot of neglect, I've noticed. And while having a street in there would definitely help, it would definitely be a boon to all the businesses. I can see all of the things that it would improve. However, I am also worried that it'll ruin that mood, that it'll ruin the sort of atmosphere that it already has. The... I want, I want the best for downtown Fresno. And I think that whatever needs to be done to revitalize it should be done, whether that is, in fact, including the streets and all the amenities that would come with it. I'm fully in support of that. However, I'm also considering, or I would hope that it would be considered, overlooking over whether or not it's a function of the mall itself being in a state of neglect and in a state of not being appealing to people to come down to, perhaps, maybe not advertised enough. I'm not sure. Either way, I would just urge, I would like to stress the importance of looking at this from different perspectives, as I'm sure has already been done. So, thank you.
All right. We have no further comment? Oh, I'm sorry, we...
Buenas tardes a todos. Good afternoon. Yo soy Guadalupe Gutierrez, vice president de MAPPA, Asociación Política Media Americana. Guadalupe Gutierrez, Vice President of MAPPA, Mexican-American Political Association. Aquí vivo en el pueblo. I live downtown. Para mí, el Fulton Mall es mi yarda. The Fulton Mall is my yard. No necesitamos carros en el Fulton Mall. We do not need cars in the Fulton Mall. Acaban de matar a una de nuestras hermanitas en la calle Fulton. One of our sisters has just been killed on Fulton Street. No hay necesidad de que se abra una calle donde haya más problemas. We do not need to open a street where there's more problems. Tenemos que tener un lugar donde podamos salir con nuestra familia, con nuestros hijos y saber que no los va a atropellar un carro. We need to be able to go places with our kids, with our children, with our family, where we know that we're not gonna be hit by a car. Si hay carros en el Fulton Mall, va a haber más accidentes. If there's cars in the Fulton Mall, there's gonna be more accidents. Las playeras que dicen yo creo, the teachers that say, "I believe." Yo creo que no debemos de abrir el Fulton Mall. I believe we should not open the Fulton Mall. También se habló de creer en alguien y se habló de la transparencia. They also talk, our brothers, sisters gotta speak about transparency and about trust. I do not trust our mayor. Yo no le tengo confianza a nuestra alcaldía. Cuando da bonos a gente, tenemos que tener cuidado cuando ya esté controlando ese dinero. When she gives bonuses to people, we need to be careful when she's controlling the money. So entonces, yo digo que no se abre el Fulton Mall. Do not open the Fulton Mall. Gracias. Thank you.
All right. Seen no further comment. I will bring this discussion back to, up to the dais at this point. So I have quite a few council members that are wanting to make some remarks on this issue. And I guess I will, I will start them off, since it's in my district. And I'll try to do my best to, and I'm not gonna speak very long. I think we've had multiple public hearings on this issue. And while I certainly respect all the various points of view, I think that the decision to return traffic to the Fulton Mall has already really been made. So I just want to make sure that as we have the discussion this, this afternoon, that we have it in like the proper context. We're really not debating whether or not to return traffic. We've already made that decision as a body. What we are discussing today is awarding the contract and starting the construction work. And there is a legitimate discussion about that because as a, as a council, we made some pretty strong provisions when we decided to return traffic to the street. And one of those provisions is that this project would not exceed a certain price cap, and I believe the price cap was $20 million. And obviously, our lowest bidder was a couple of million dollars over, I think $2.3 million over. So that is deserving of a discussion, how we handle that. It would appear to be that just the fact that the lowest bid is, is over the limits, the parameters that we set, deserves further discussion. We've met with the mayor, I've met with staff, and as is illustrated in the staff report, I believe that we have, the staff recommendations put the proper measures in place to give us, to make sure that we're not going to exceed what the previous council provisions were. And I believe, I believe Councilmember Brand came up with those previous provisions, and I have no doubt that he will walk us through that in just a moment. I'm, I feel relatively sure that this council will not proceed if in fact all of the provisions that we have put forth in the past are met. I think that we can allow the staff to work with the contractor to see if we can, if this project can meet the provisions that we've already set forth. And if that does not occur, then we won't go forth. I don't necessarily believe that we, we need to start over at this point. So I think it's worth a shot. And I think that we have walked through this project a few times now and seen possible ways where we can achieve all the aforementioned goals and still uphold the standard that the council previously set forth. So again, this project, this discussion today is relatively narrow and limited. While I know that we've had a lot of comments about preserving, preserving the mall. You know, I want to be very honest with you folks in this room. I don't want to raise your expectations. We've had that debate. And it was settled. This body decided to move forward and return traffic to Fulton Mall, much to some of you all's dismay. And I, and listen, it was a very difficult decision for all of us to make at the time that we made it. But we did make the decision. It is now time for us as a council to move forward on that decision. And that's what we're here to do today. I believe the administration and the mayor have worked tirelessly to make sure that, should we decide to move forward today and award to the lowest bidder, that provisions are in place that do not undermine what happened in the past. So I was gonna say a whole lot more, but I'm not. I, I, I just, I think that this is a really narrow issue for us today. And while we may feel emotional about making it broad and expanding the discussion to whether or not we should return traffic or whether or not we're preserving art, we would be doing this discussion a disservice to do that, in my opinion. We should be talking about when, if and when we award this contract to the lowest bidder, do we have the right provisions in place to make sure it upholds everything that this body asked it to? I believe the answer is yes to that today. And that is the decision set before us. This is an infrastructure project. This is what we do. This is not a boondoggle. This is us as a city putting in infrastructure. It is what we do. And I think this is a very fair discussion. But we do this. We build roads and streets to support our assets in this city. So with that, I'm gonna make the motion that we accept staff's recommendation to award the contract, the construction contract, to American Paving, the lowest responsible bidder. All right, Councilmember Brand.
Thank you, Council President. And thank you for all the people who came and took the time to continue this debate. Let me start off by clarifying that all the artwork will be restored. My comments were taken out of context. Every artwork, benches, fountain, everything pursuant to the EIR that was approved will be there. So just to start off correctly. Like Don Skort, you know, I was in junior high school when the mall was, was put in with a lot of high hope and a lot of fanfare. And city fathers like us back then, they had the same dilemma we did. How do we keep downtown viable? And their answer back then was a major investment in the mall. But 50 years later, we look at the end result, and it was unsuccessful. You can judge, and my seven years on the council, I've seen a lot of change downtown. If you look around downtown, it's impossible to ignore all the activity and all the changes downtown. But if you go down specifically on the Fulton Mall, you see all the vacancies. You see the tenant profile. You see the low rents. And you compare that, for example, to the cultural arts district. I mean, that's evidence that Fulton Mall is not really taking off. It never has. So when I looked at this, you know, and I evaluated, I was very thorough. I spent a lot of time, a lot of research into this. I spoke to investors, real estate brokers, engineers, construction professionals, city staff to fully evaluate and study what I was looking at. And of course, we had a disparity between the original engineer's estimate and the low bid from American Paving. And I spent time with the engineers going through each line item, line by line, to evaluate where we could potentially make savings and through value engineering. And I believe that, you know, we can breach that gap. And also, my evaluation's based on 30-plus years as a real estate broker, a general contractor, a developer. I've spent a lot of time in this industry, and I'm convinced that, you know, particularly in a comparative analysis of other cities who tried it, that we can be successful and it will make a difference to, to make the mall through streets again. And for really over 50 years before 1964, Fulton was a vibrant street. I mean, I was, before I could drive cars, everybody dragged, the main was Fulton Avenue back then. So I've got pictures in my office back in 1920 with cars driving down Fulton Street. But the question is, what happens? I asked myself a series of questions. The first question, what happens if we do nothing? If we do nothing, you got a mall that's probably 50% vacant, 50 cents a square foot, probably average on the rent. So in essence, you have these underperforming properties. Because I've had people tell me, "Well, who cares about downtown?" If you do nothing, these city, these properties that are underperforming and over-consuming in city services, public safety, public works, code enforcement, this is a financial drain on the city general fund. If I look at 10 years from now, where are we gonna be? I don't see we're gonna be any place different than we are today. It's not been successful. And there's no doubt in my mind that in 10 years or 20 years, there's gonna be a significant, significant difference. And you can measure this by the level of investment in terms of where people want to go. We made a decision roughly one year ago to open the mall. Since that decision was made, already $65 million has been invested in properties on the mall. Since that decision was made, already $65 million has been invested in properties on the mall or near the mall. That does not include two other projects currently in the planning stages for $50 million. That's over $100 million. $100 million is committed based on opening the Fulton Mall. And you don't have to take a rocket science to figure out that opening the Fulton Mall is opening the eyes of a lot of investors, particularly people like Mehmet Noyan, who talked earlier, who did Palm Bluffs. He's not did too many unsuccessful projects. There's other big names out there that are buying properties too. And that tells me something's going on, there's something to it. If we continue this process and open the mall, in my opinion, you're going to, with all this money invested, you're going to see a lot of turnovers in the properties and millions of dollars more will be spent in renovations. And in the end, you're going to see these properties that are undervalued raise between 3% and 400% in value. And what does that mean to the general fund? That means property taxes, sales tax, room tax, all the types of taxes associated with this development will dramatically improve. That means these underperforming properties, they can get halfway to where North Fresno's $2 to $3 a foot, we're not even 50 cents a foot. We get to $1 a foot, $1.25 a foot, $1.50 a foot. That's a phenomenal increase in this area. At the same time, you're, in my opinion, you'll bring in more investment, you'll bring in people that'll come down there with disposable incomes, it'll make a dramatic impact on city coffers. This will go from being a negative losing asset for the city to being a winning asset for the city. And in addition to these direct benefits of construction jobs, additional jobs in terms of retailers, office buildings, residential buildings, there's secondary induced benefits. I think it gives us the opportunity to hire, to bring in major retailers. I can't think back how many, 50 years ago, to the last major retailer on the Fulton Mall. But I think there's an opportunity now, and I know there's people that are talking about making investments on the mall based on these kind of decisions. And in the end, the mall is the heart, and Fulton Street is the heart and the soul of this city. And I think making this thing turn around will make a big difference. And really, if you measure, and this is $20 million, not general fund money, and this money from the Tiger Grant, state and TOD funds, this money can't be used to, for parks, can't be used for public safety, it's specifically limited to this type of development. And if you were to measure the return on investment, this $10 million, over 10 years, I'm willing to bet, even if this was general funds, man, the entire thing would be returned at least double within a 10-year period of time. And people have brought up, you know, every time we bring up any major project in the city of Fresno, it's, oh my God, here we go again, the city of Fresno, the Met Museum, the Granite Park, blah, 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 blah. Okay. And I've said this before, in 2009 is a major demarcation in the city of Fresno. A new administration came in and a new council came in. And for seven years, I've written financial reform policies, we've made difficult decisions to keep the city solvent. It's not the same city. Just by way of comparison, just a simple comparison, I'll use two items, the Grizzly Stadium. First of all, that was a general fund at-risk project. This is not a general fund at-risk project. That project was presented, and I'm not trying to do a judgment on anybody before me, it's simply an evaluation of the consequences of those decisions. But projections on attendance, projections on contract revenue, projections on concessions, projections on parking revenues, nothing, nothing was verified. It was all basically a lack of due diligence. And the end result, of course, as we know with the end result, has cost the city a lot more money. The Granite Park is even simpler, was again, at-risk, because the city lent $15 million, secured by the property, an appraisal wasn't done, 100-year-old property, a Phase 1 environmental report wasn't done, and the most elementary things that anybody would do, loaning money on a property, there was absolutely no review of financial documents. That would, any of those three things would have been done, that decision would have never been made. And so there's a huge difference between what we're doing today and what we did five years ago, or 20 or 15 years ago. And I went through this bid, and I had the same concerns as anybody else out there that's talked about. We had a $20 million, 20.2 million engineer's estimate, the funding that was matched back a year ago is 20.2. And I'm the person who made the amendment that we come back on budget and that no general funds would be used in this project. And now we have a low bid of 22.4, and it's a $2.2 million gap. Remember also, within that $20 million, there's a 10% contingency. That's $2 million, that's a $2 million pad on top of everything else. Not that we have to be safe, and that was put in there for that reason. I think originally it was 5%. I elevated it to 10%. We also are going to, as the mayor mentioned, we're going to apply the Construction Management Act that I wrote a few months ago, that has best practices provisions, and also includes an oversight board. So this project will be layered with oversight. By contrast, I can tell you, when the Met Museum was getting cash draws, city manager, virtually nobody was overseeing the cash draws, not the city, not the bank, nobody. This is a dramatic departure from what we did in the past. I'm convinced, and I'll never say 100%, there's nothing that's 100%, but I'm at 90% confidence level that we're making the right decision today, that this will reap huge benefits in the future. And I don't talk about one year, two years, I'm talking 10 years, 15 years down the road that would, I believe, will have a transformative effect on the city of Fresno. And it's always easy, it's always easy to say no. And it's, all the decisions since I've been here have been difficult decisions, making decisions to keep the city solvent, making decisions to make, approve a $400 million capital, water capital program that doubled the rates of rate payers, that I know down the road will save the city of Fresno and future generations in the city of Fresno. And there's never any one single project that's ever going to save downtown or save Fresno. Rather, it's the culmination of projects put together in a strategic manner that eventually will have the end result of revitalizing the heart of this city. And I can see that as we move forward, this is a component, there's other components we're still working on, but I strongly urge my colleagues to support this item, and I've invested the time that I feel comfortable in that evaluation, that recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Brand. And just to clarify my motion, my motion is to accept all three of staff's recommendations. So I want to make sure that I reflect that for the record. Are you okay with that in a second?
Yeah, yeah. One final thing, too, just to clarify. This project does not move forward unless appropriations match cost. If in the end, through value engineering, cost savings, we cannot close the gap, we will not proceed. We have to find the money. It can be through cost savings or through other federal grants. If somebody wants to donate a half a million dollars, it's not going to come from the general fund. So make that clear, this will not move forward unless we have a match. And I'm confident, based on what I've seen, we can achieve that. Thank you.
Councilmember Brand out.
Thank you, Council President. All right. I just want to, can I call the mayor up? I'd like to call the mayor up. Mayor, could I? I want to clarify a couple of things that I keep hearing people talk about, and Councilman Brand mentioned a couple of them. But I've got a, I've got a couple of concerns on some of these issues, and I want to ask the mayor directly. Although Councilman Brand just talked about this a little bit, when we voted, when was our vote on the Fulton Mall?
February 27th, 2014.
Wow.
A year ago, February.
That long ago, okay. And we voted to proceed with opening to automobile traffic on the Fulton Mall?
To receive the federal grants and to approve the environmental documentation, which selected the traffic option.
Okay. And I voted for that, to the dismay of some.
And to the delight of others.
Right. We capped it at that, at that, at that point at $20 million, right? And we put in some safeguards and, kind of like, almost poison pills. In other words, it cannot exceed this, we will not allow any general fund money to be used. So then the bid has come back at closer to $23 million. And so for people that, you know, their minds have been full of their own arguments today, I want them to hear it again. You've talked about value engineering, some of the folks that have spoke have talked about value engineering. We've authorized a $20 million project, but the contractor is telling us that's a $23 million project. Can you real clearly explain what value engineering is for us?
Sure, although I would also suggest that perhaps Scott Mosier helped on the technical side of this, but let me just provide a few comments. First of all, I don't support a project that exceeds $20 million.
Okay.
I am recommending to you that we not pull funds from elsewhere to complete this project, general fund, go after additional grant funds, or go find more transportation money, Measure C, or whatever. I believe, we said we would do a $20 million project, we will do a $20 million project. So with that in mind, we evaluated the design specifications and the bids that came in and asked ourselves, what, you know, are there items here that we could, that we could eliminate from the ultimate project, such as a traffic signal, converting to a stop sign instead of a traffic signal, such as a different type of light standard that's lower cost? Nothing that jeopardizes the integrity of the project, but that would in fact lower the costs. If our team internally didn't see a path to closing that $2.5 million gap, we would not be here recommending that we move forward with awarding the contract. We would be recommending that we reject the bids and we start over. But because we can already identify cost-saving measures, and let me be clear, no unit prices would change whatsoever. The bids are the bids, we would stick with the unit prices that are submitted, but we do believe that there are aspects of the project that could be value engineered in design specifications that could be clarified that will result in us lowering the cost to meet the appropriations. So that is probably the, you know, the best way to explain it.
Mayor, if, so if, for somebody that doesn't do this a lot, or hasn't heard that term a lot in their life, is it safe to say that value engineering is like this? We've got a $20 million project, but the proposal's 23. Once we enter into the contract, if we do enter into that contract today, we say to the contractor, hey, the bottom line is, we have $20 million, can you make it happen or not? Is that, that might be oversimplifying, but is that kind of where we're at?
It's where we're at. And the process the contractor would have to go through to determine whether or not he or she could make it work is by looking for cost-saving measures, such as the ones we've mentioned, changing out the light standards, converting traffic signals, nothing that would either change the unit price or in any way compromise the design of the project that's required by the EIR. So, but, so that's how the analysis they would have to go through to be able to tell us, yes, we can, we can, we can do it for the $20 million.
Okay. So then, so we enter into a contract, we say, and this is what Councilman Brand just talked about, cost matching appropriations, we say, hey, the bottom line is, we have $20 million. You've bid 23, we want to work together to see if we can bring it down to $20 million, and you're committed to a $20 million project, not a 23 million or a 20 plus $1 project?
I actually would throw in the buck.
Oh, okay. You would throw in the dollar, okay.
Personally, we'll put a dollar there.
Good deal.
But yes, that's about all I could help with.
Okay. Okay. So if the, if the contractor says, you know, I've just crunched the numbers, I can maybe bring it down from 23 to 21 million, then how, does that come back to council? Do I have a chance to say, no, that's not what I agreed on, or how would that work?
Well, I'll ask for help from, from the city attorney, because there are technical issues related to rejecting bids and starting over. But again, I'll reiterate to you, I support a $20 million project, I don't support a $21 million project. I believe the cost-saving measures are there. Should we not be able to find them because of the non-appropriation clause in the contract, we would not move forward. And we would invoke that clause in the contract, and, and we would have a choice to make. Do we move forward with a new design process and rebid, or do we move forward at all? So, so yeah, so there are multiple steps that would be involved.
City attorney, I mean, you agree with what you just heard, so there is a safeguard right in the contract itself, this non-appropriations clause?
Yes, that's in the contract.
It can't force us to continue.
Right. And additionally, under the charter, any contract with the city to be enforceable must be approved by the city attorney as legal. And in this case, one of the legal conditions is that the appropriations match the cost. If it does not, we will not sign off on it as a legal contract.
Okay. And council, council will know when that happens, if it were to happen?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Doug. Okay, Mayor, so, so we're both committed to a $20 million project. Now, I have another line of questioning to ask you about investment, investment on the mall. You and I have had a couple of conversations in the last couple of weeks leading up to this vote. I met with Mehmet Noyan, spoke earlier, Terrence Frazier, I went and looked at their projects that they've already begun really on the mall, or in the process of kicking them off. I know that Savak has done great things just since we took that vote last year. And, and then there's been others, there's been Jason and this guy Bob that came up today, and Rick also have already done investments just since we've taken our vote. But can you, can you outline for some that are in our community that are really worried about what we're doing today, the kind of investment that we've already seen get fired up just since we took that vote a year ago?
Sure. In fact, we have an estimate from the Downtown Partnership that about $65 million of private investment has happened since the vote this last year. And we know the South Stadium project is roughly a $20 million project in Phase 1 they're holding until we begin construction. We also know Hotel Fresno got approved this last cycle for a cap-and-trade grant, so now they're financed for a $23 million project. There's another $40 million that's right there, ready to go. And both of those projects came along only because we were talking about making changes to the mall. So the focus on our historic Main Street, the extensive community outreach and design processes that have occurred have certainly attracted the eyes and the interests, and in many cases, the investments of people who are saying, I want to be a part of that, I see the vision. But we also know that there are those that are holding back to see if in fact we move forward, and as the Fresno B editorial put it today, businesses expect cities to follow through with their plans. And if we intend to be a city that attracts investment, we have to demonstrate that we're willing to follow through on plans, understanding there's always risk and any bit of change. But the reality is, there's far more risk in staying the same, because things will only continue to decline.
All right. Thanks a lot, Mayor, I appreciate that. So I voted yes when we took the vote on the Fulton Mall. And today, and one of the reasons I voted yes, by the way, I want to thank everybody who spoke, whichever side you were on, there's actually valid points, there's great valid comments within those points all the way around. I told the mayor, I think probably yesterday, we were talking about the Fulton Mall, and I said, you know, are a lot of people going to turn out in orange t-shirts like last time? And she said, yeah, probably. And I go, oh my gosh. But the truth is, I'm going to just explain my viewpoint of where I'm at, where I'm at today with the Fulton Mall. I didn't get persuaded a lot today. I didn't hear anything new today that I didn't already know. I still thank everybody for making their expression. I go back to when I had to take this vote last year. I went down and walked the Fulton Mall myself a couple times, and I go to a meeting that's down off of the mall. And so one of the days that this meeting got over with, I just started walking the mall. Nobody told me to walk it, nobody, I just started walking the mall. The way my mind works, I know that there, I know that there's beautiful artwork there, some of it, and then I know that, don't get me in trouble, capriolio. And then, but really, what I saw was not a lot of economic development on the mall. And I'm going to move my flag so I can see my buddy Craig Shartin. I did, you know, I've been to Peeves a couple of times, but apart from that, I don't see a lot of economic, I see things going on down there, but they're not major. They're not, they're just not major. For the amount of space, all of the stuff that could be there, I just, I just came to the conclusion that it's, that it's not working. Now, we can get into the blame of why it's not working, or, you know, what if we did that, or what if we would have done that different? That's not where this council's at today. We don't, it's wasting our time to talk about that. We just have to deal with what is. On the radio the other day, I talked about us coun- On the radio the other day, I talked about us council, I don't even think I expressed this to my fellow council members, I called us the fixers, in my opinion. I've been on this council three years, we've had to fix a lot of stuff. And it's not tough, I mean, it is tough when you're fixing previous votes, you know, because you don't want to lay blame, but you have to move forward. That's where I was at on the mall. I don't, I went to the mall, I grew up in Selma, twice a year, my mom drove my brother and I up to the Fulton Mall because it was the only place to shop, and we came up to the Fulton Mall, and we bought back-to-school clothes and Easter clothes. And then, but that was when Selma didn't have, I mean, that's when Selma, you had to do something like come to Fresno for your clothes like that. But now, that's not a demand, people can go anywhere for all of that stuff. So I don't know why the mall deteriorated, for all my friends that love the pedestrian mall, but it did. Now, my problem is, when I walk down the mall, I see a lot of problems. I see businesses that are struggling, that people are urinating on the doorstep, throwing trash, it's very difficult. I want to see those businesses succeed as well as other businesses succeed. So I don't think the mall's functioning, with the mayor talking about that we're still dedicated to a $20 million project, not a $23 million project. I see my vote today as a continuation of my previous vote. So I am going to be supporting the Fulton Mall today. And sir, you raised good points, and I am a fiscal conservative, and another lady also called me out by name, and I understand that. Sometimes, not all the time, but sometimes the fiscal conservative thing to do is to fix a problem, you just see the problem, you know it's a problem, just fix it now, and then start moving forward. That's the way I look at my vote today. I'm also very interested in the jobs that will come to the city of Fresno, from all of the private investment that the mayor talked about, and the investment yet to come. And also, as Councilman Brand talked about, the increased tax base, when those property values go up, that's going to mean more money into our general fund to do, to hire the staffing, to bring restoration of services that our city's been demanding. So I am going to support, again, the opening of the Fulton Mall, and I'm going to support entering into the contract today. I am going to tell everybody though, and sir, I'm still sticking to my 20 million. If it comes back over 20 million despite that, I'm not going to be able to support it past today. So thank you very much, Council President, I'm going to be supporting this project.
Councilmember Capriolio.
Thank you, Council President. You know, folks, I really truly support downtown. Derek and the Grizzlies, congratulations again. My family, particularly my son, who's a baseball player at City College, loved our times there, will continue to support the Grizzlies, and as a downtown entity. And the fire department's downtown, we had an experience recently with a firefighter for a day, had lunch today downtown. I earn my living downtown. I've been to courthouse all the time. And in fact, my partner and I own a building downtown at Mercedes End Street, and we have about 18 people employed there, so I'm totally behind and support downtown. But, as an elected, I have a fiduciary duty to my constituents that supersedes any interests I might have. I just want to make that clear, I have that duty as an elected, to represent the people of the 4th District of the city of Fresno. And I've been out walking the past two months, it's no secret, I guess, I'm up for reelection in June, but I've been walking for the last two months, and talking to my constituents, talking to my voters, and quite frankly, they just don't support this project. They don't support it, plain and simple. So I want to put that on the record as well. Now, for me, my paramount concern is the budget. I'm comparing the budget to the scope of work, and the scope of work exceeds the budget by 2.3 million, in my view, plus. It doesn't, in my simple world, in my simple mind, budget, scope of work, they have to match up, have to match up now before I could support any project, any project, not just the mall or downtown. But that's the way I do business, that's the way I've always done business, that's the way my father taught me to do business, so I'm just, there's got to be a way to have those numbers match up, and they don't, so it's, I'm not supporting the project. In addition to the budget analysis, we need, at least in my view, a 20% contingency fee because of the downtown, because of the history of our community. There's going to be things that, I know this will pass today, I'm well aware of that, but the history of our community, when we tear that mall up, it's going to produce a lot of things that are going to take a lot of extra time, effort, energy, and money to get past them, artifacts. And we've done that with Chinatown and other areas downtown that we've recently remodeled and updated. So I think that's, 20 million may or may not be a realistic number, I think the contingency portion of the budget needs to be increased, and increased by 20%. Now, I'm not a person to say no without an option or without an alternative, a solution, if you will. I understand the Tiger Grant, if it's not used, it would be returned to the federal government, and who knows what happens with it at that point. So in order to preserve that Tiger Grant, an option I would suggest, again, I know it won't pass, but I would suggest that we take that money and take the mall from the clock tower south, and see if that comes within budget with all the contingencies that are involved. If we do the south portion of the mall and it comes within budget, that's a positive sign. If it doesn't, that's, we know what happened there. So that's an option I think that would be viable, and that would keep the employment of the trades in this particular project, it would produce that tax basis that we've talked about, it would do all the things that we're talking about, but well within our budget, and I think that's critical. As I said, I'm sure this project will pass today, and I see a lot of friends out in the audience, Chris Pacheco, and Chris Cummings, and Craig, and my friend Mick Marterosian, and Nathan, and I could go Blair, I see you back there, I haven't seen you in a long time, fraternity brother, Derek, you know, you guys, you're my friends, and I respect you and your opinion of what you're trying to do, and I really believe that the success of this downtown Fresno is contingent upon, not this project, but each and every one of you, each and every one of you. I encourage you to keep doing what you're doing, keep putting Fresno on the map. I'm going to do my part with my building, and my media, my approach to life and to supporting Fresno. So it's really, you know, keep up the good work, and let's make downtown Fresno a success, really. Thank you.
Councilmember Quintero.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to thank all of you that have sent me emails and phone calls, and, you know, from both sides of the issue, and I wanted to thank Georgia, when I called her to go over some specifics, and Jennifer and Dan as well, and Wilma, got a questions for you, a couple of questions right now, just for clarification. One of the concerns that I had initially when we started this process was if the street, if Fulton was opened up to traffic, what was going to happen with the artwork? And the, so the follow-up question to that, I mean, I was told that it's, the city hired a consultant to meet with the arts groups and that type of thing, has all that happened?
Yes, okay, so I can assure you that the reinstallation and restoration of all of the artwork is an important part of the project and will remain. Linda Cano, who is the city's art consultant, has been working with us for nearly two years now on every aspect of the project pertaining to the art. And if it's okay, I'd like to call Linda up to address your question about what we've done to date, and what you can expect going forward.
You know that this project provides for funding to restore, conserve, clean, repair, and then reinstall 32 pieces of public art to this area. To date, we have contacted the artists or their heirs or their foundations, and we have let them know about this project, we have let them know that under state and federal law, they have the opportunity to do the work themselves, they have the opportunity to de-install and conserve the work. So we've let them know about that, given them the opportunity. Out of the 32 pieces that this project affects, 11 will be worked on by the artist. Joyce Aiken will be working on her benches, and also one of the artist's heirs, a son will be working on two of the pieces as well. The other pieces, the other pieces will be conserved by professional conservators, and the qualifications for these conservators, I can tell you, are the highest standards. I know that the city received a copy of a letter sent to the Caltrans historical, architectural historian, and it was from Julianne Polanco, who is California State Historic Preservation Officer. And she said to her knowledge that the folks that are being proposed, the conservators that are being proposed, meet and exceed the standards, so they're incredibly high standards. Every piece will be returned to its, as close to its original position as possible, and for all the pieces except for one, that means within the same block, so very, very close to where they were originally. There is one piece that's going to be a couple of blocks down, Stan Bitter's Dancing Waters will be out in front of the stadium, so that one's an exception, but all the rest will be restored to their original locations within a block, within the same block. The pieces as well will all be restored to their, as close to their original condition as possible, and so the goal of conservation and repair is to get the art pieces to look like they were originally intended, what was the artist's original intent. So this project provides for all those things to be done, and it's really a tremendous opportunity. This collection of artwork is owned by the people of Fresno, and it's incredibly important, and clearly people are very concerned about it, and rightfully so. But this is an opportunity for the city to care for its very, very precious treasure, and this is one of the most prestigious, most important collections of public art in the country, I can't stress that enough. So this is a way to care for it, and really to make amends to the fact that the art has not been taken care of as well as it could be.
Okay. Have you had, or have you had ongoing meetings with the members of the local art communities regarding the artwork? Because that was a big concern too, saying that they hadn't been contacted.
Sure, there are a couple of living artists still, and I have spoken with them, Joyce is going to be working on her work, we've also had a number of conversations with Stan Bitter's. There's also been some outreach, there is a Fulton Street Art Collection Committee, Advisory Committee, that's been ongoing, we have a Fulton Street Facebook page, and these all engage the community, the artists as well as members of the community at large. Also, along with this project, there's a new app that's being developed by Downtown Fresno Partnership, in one sense, it's going to engage the community even further, there will be information about the history of the project, about each individual artist, about the individual works of art, it's going to be very, very interactive, and this digital technology is going to continue. So the art community has been engaged, and the public in general has been engaged, all along in this process.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That was one of the big concerns that I had, and also that we had more involvement with, or communication with the folks from the arts community. The mayor, I guess, referenced earlier, or reminded us that it was in February 2014 that we cast the initial vote, and then I know that we just started going back and forth on maybe how that should be developed, or what could be done, and that type of thing. And I guess, you know, what I want to touch on, and I was probably one of the biggest critics on how that could be built out, and the type of investment that should go on, but what's gone on in the downtown area since 2014 is that one of the things that we constantly hear from different organizations, or people saying, well, the north part of Fresno gets all the money. Anything that's new or gets developed is in North Fresno. And now, you know, you're looking at 20 million to come into the southern part of the city, and specifically the downtown area in Councilmember Baines's, President Baines's district, but what's occurred downtown here, or in the southern part of the downtown area, that since February of 2014, and Councilmember Brandau said that he's walked down there and seen some things, well, there's, I'm looking at, since February of 2014, there's been new investment in the area, and that, that's the Mehmet Noyan and Terrence Frazier investing money since then. Mr. Katchadorian, I think you mentioned you have five buildings now in that area. Community Medical Center has expanded their programs, and they're going to need more space. The high-speed rail has become a reality. Radisson became the Doubletree, and you saw a new investment inside of that building. And if you'll notice also, there's a lot of new conventions that are being attracted into the area. The county has built some new courthouses on Tuolumne Street, and remodeled some of the offices that they've had to take over. There was a Bitwise that had a grand opening recently, and then also, President Baines reminded me that the Full Circle Brewery has now opened since then. And it appears to me now that I see a lot of the safeguards that we had concerns about are now in place and have been taken care of. The thing that I guess is different too that we're seeing is there's momentum now, in terms of investment, new, old buildings that are getting remodeled. One of the big, the big concerns for years that in order for downtown to succeed was housing, and you're starting to see that as well, with all the new housing that's occurring down there. So there's just a lot of the things that were needed that are now going on that I'm seeing with that. And one of the most important things, I believe, one of the councilmembers referenced earlier, was that of jobs. We're always talking about working on creating new jobs in the area, so I really believe that that, along with the high-speed rail coming into the area, is just going to really help the economy, and then the tax base that Councilmember Brand referenced earlier, the business tax that's going to occur. So, you know, a lot of the concerns that I've had have been really addressed, and, you know, it's never going to be perfect, but I think this is as good as it's going to get, and I recall when we talked about years ago, and Derek Franks reminds me of that every once in a while, about when we voted to build the Chichanci Park, of course, the financing was different, but now you've got a champion, you've got a champion. So hopefully, this will also become a champion in our southern part of the city, and specifically the downtown, because that will also help the southeast area of the council district that I represent. So I'm going to be supporting this today, and look forward to seeing a lot of new things occurring in the area. Thank you.
Councilmember Soria.
Thank you, Council President. So a lot of the comments that I was going to make have been made, but I do want to thank the Council President for putting into context today's vote. So as he mentioned, we're not here to debate whether we're going to open So, as he mentioned, we're not here to debate whether we're going to open the mall or not, but really, what contract, if we're to accept the contract. I do want to say that, for me, this is my first vote as it's related to the mall, because I am the newest council member. And I do want to say that I want to thank the staff for sitting with me, the mayor for sitting with me and talking through some of the concerns that I have. So, I will speak to some of the concerns that actually were laid out and, in my conversations, have, I believe, been addressed to my satisfaction. So, one, I will go back to just kind of what my council colleague, Quintero, mentioned in terms of the art. I know that that has been a big concern that was brought to my attention from a number of my constituents and also residents and folks sitting here in the audience. So, I appreciate the clarification and the commitment to ensure that the art and the integrity of these art pieces are maintained as we move forward with the project. Three other issues that I have, and I know that were also raised. One, I think everyone has mentioned in terms of staying within budget and what was voted on back in February of 2014. And so, I can say that I feel comfortable enough with the safeguards that are in place to ensure this. I'm actually the chair of the Oversight Committee, so I appreciate the administration making sure that this project, even though it's not required to go under the Oversight Committee, it will be coming forward. So, I feel comfortable enough that, being part of the chair, I will make sure that we do stay within the budget as approved by this council. I also would like to request on, in addition to that, and I know it hasn't really been part of the discussion, but I did mention to the mayor, that I actually want to see a report back within the next 30 days, coming back, whatever you guys end up scaling back to make sure that it is down to the $20 million, that the council and actually the public gets an opportunity to hear and get laid out what are some of those cost savings that you guys found to ensure that it stays within that budget. So, I'm just putting it for the record. I know that the mayor is committed to bringing that back. The other couple of issues that I had, one, are related to the cultural events that happen in the downtown mall. And so, we know that there will be disruption over the next year, and there are really valuable events and cultural events that happen. I actually was just there for Las Festas Patrias with my parents, and it's a well-turned-out event. Thousands of people come out, not only from the city of Fresno, but from all those surrounding rural communities. And so, I brought this to the attention of the mayor. I thought, I wasn't sure if it was an issue that was really spoken about previously, but at least now that I'm here, I wanted to make sure that there was a commitment to ensure that while there's a disruption with any construction of the mall for Cinco de Mayo, for the Festas Patrias, that we actually accommodated and find an alternative location while the construction is happening. And I know that I've gotten the commitment from the administration that these events will happen. I had proposed using the Grizzly Stadium as an alternative location, if that was something that these organizations that put on the event were amenable to. So, I look forward to being able to help these organizations continue celebrating the culture here in our community and making sure that these events are as successful, so that even the small vendors that come during these events that happen in the Fulton Mall can also take advantage and so that they will be part of the celebration and take the opportunity, have the opportunity to also be able to have some business during that time. The last thing that I also want to mention that I know has been mentioned by a few people is regarding the existing businesses. While there are many vacancies in the Fulton Mall, the reality is that there are still a lot of small businesses, a lot of small Latino businesses. And to me, I will say that these businesses are something that I value when I see the faces of these individuals, because I actually have gone and go shopping to some of these businesses at one point or another. I see the faces of my parents, because my parents are also small entrepreneurs. And so, with the opening of the mall, I don't know what will happen in terms of if we will have this big economic development. I can't say that it's the silver bullet, but if it does happen to see that we begin to see a lot of this revitalization and people get priced out, that's a concern of mine. And I want to make sure that the city is conscious of those potential issues. And so, I did bring that concern to the mayor, and I believe that I do have the commitment from the administration and the mayor to create a program to help these small businesses, so that if there is a process to help them relocate, I've already spoken to also CDFI. I sit on the board, where we can work conjunctively to ensure that if there are any impacts to some of the existing businesses who have been committed to the downtown area, that we actually provide them an alternative, so that they don't lose out. Because even though they may be a small business, they're still generating revenues for our community. And I think that it's only fair that, given the fact that they've been there for a number of years, they continue to have the opportunity and our support as elected officials here in our community to help them continue to thrive, even if it's in another neighborhood. And so, I am happy to say that I've worked with the administration, that we're going to work on a program to ensure that we do have that safeguard for those existing businesses. And I just will close by saying that, as I mentioned, I don't know if opening the mall will be the silver bullet in terms of revitalization, but I will say that there's a lot of synergy in our community. There's a synergy in terms of the people that have, that are here today, the investors that I've met with that have said that they are willing to invest, the individuals that are currently investing already there in the Fulton Mall, and also with the high-speed rail project. So, there's a lot of synergy and a lot of potential here in the city of Fresno. And I will say that I think that this is an opportunity for us to do something. So, today, I am happy to be able to support moving forward with the contract, given all the safeguards and the conversations and the commitments that I've had from the mayor to ensure that the issues that I raised were addressed. So, thank you, Council President.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Soria. All right. We, looks like we have, all the councilmembers have weighed in on this issue. We have a motion, we have a second, we have some further staff direction. So, as has been customary with these larger vote, my dear friend, Mayor Swearingen loves to see us put it up on the board. So, I see the camera's already ready. So, with that, a yes vote will accept the staff recommendations, and a no vote will reject them. So, we'll vote electronically. The vote passes six to one with Councilmember Capriolio voting no. All right. Thank you all. Good work. We'll now move on with the rest of our agenda. So, I know Councilmember Brandow wants to make a statement before.
Yeah, I don't know. Should I give him a minute or two to clear out?
Well, we'll take a five-minute recess. This is actions pertaining to the commercial aviation non-exclusive license agreement with the Delta Global Services.
Council President, can I?
Go right ahead, sir. Yes.
Is now a good time? Can I?
Do you need to leave right now?
What we talked to you about?
Yeah. Kevin, before we introduce the item, let me allow Councilmember Brandow to make a quick comment on an item.
All right. Thank you, Council President. I've been fighting a cold all week, actually, and so, I'm going to take off, and I wanted to stay through that last vote. But I do want to, with council's approval, register a couple of votes right before I leave, if that's okay? I'd like to vote yes on item 3C. I believe that's the wellness, the fire department's wellness program.
That's correct.
Okay. I'm going to vote yes on this. This item that we're just about to hear from Kevin, and that's a yes vote on the airport, that's also a yes vote. And then, Doug, I need some help on the one that you and I talked about, which is the Development Code. Although I'm voting a no vote on the whole thing, I'm voting yes on Lee's amendment to insert current marijuana dispensation language, the current language into the new Development Code. Is that?
Concerning the dispensaries, yes.
Okay.
The motion that was brought up last week, he plans to make the same motion today. You plan to register a yes vote on Councilmember Brand's motion, but a no vote on the Development Code itself. Is that correct?
You've got it. You have it. And let me double-check real quick. Sorry about that, but I've got to get going. And then, Council President also, and City Clerk, a no vote on item 3E. So, thank you, Council President, for letting me do that.
You're very welcome, and we hope you get better, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you for hanging with us this long.
Council President, I might not be here for the Development Code vote that was just addressed, and I'd like to join in a yes vote as per my colleague, if that's possible.
Sure.
Is that possible?
You're wishing to have a yes vote on Councilmember Brand's amendment, and what vote on the Development Code itself?
A yes and a no.
A yes and a yes.
Yes and, oh, that's fine. Yes and a yes.
All right. All right. Thank you, Kevin, for being very patient. We'll now allow staff to do item 3A. And thank you, Director Clark, for graciously ceding your position to the airport director here to allow them to go out of turn, so.
Right. Council President, Council, good afternoon. Kevin Michael, Director of Aviation. The item before you is a licensing agreement between the airport and DGS. DGS ground handles both, excuse me, Delta Airlines and United Airlines, and this is a three-year extension on their license. They've been there for three years. They are continuing to contract with these airlines, do operations at our airport, so, and they have asked for a three-year extension. And I'm available for any questions, if you have any. Thank you.
We'll now take the item out to the public. Do we have any members of the public wishing to comment on this item? All right. Seeing none, we'll bring the item back to the dais. Councilmember Capriolio.
A motion to approve, Council President.
All right. I'll second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item passes six zero with Councilmember Brandow absent. Actually, I don't think he, Mr. Clerk, can you make sure that you let me know what votes Councilmember Brandow wanted to register, and I'll include those in the final tally. Now, we'll take item 3B, I believe. Is that your next one, Kevin?
Yes.
All right.
Kevin Michael again. Without reiterating a lot of information, it's already in the staff report. As you are aware, we've had a lot of growth at our airport, and which has brought our parking lots to near or at capacity, especially during busy holiday and summer times. And this project will actually provide for a dedicated employee parking lot, this is airport employee parking, that currently is housed within the public parking lot. So, this project will actually free up a number of stalls in the public lot to help us overcome that capacity issue. And it's important to note that we're also going to be tripling the size of the cell phone waiting lot that seems to overflow every single day, more than doubling the size of the queuing area for the taxi, the taxi cab drivers, as well as providing a facility for the taxi cab drivers, so they can stay out of the weather when it's hot, when it's cold, and otherwise. So, it's something this airport has never had. Also, I'm putting in charging stations, low-emission vehicle parking stalls and things like that. So, it's a great project on a lot of fronts. It's also taking a lot of traffic off of Terminal Drive in terms of the employee traffic that has to circle around when they leave at the end of their shift. So, a lot of good air quality, a lot of good positives with this project. And I'm available for any questions, if you have any. Thank you.
All right. We'll now take the item out to the public. Do we have any members of the public wishing to comment on this item? All right. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais. Councilmember Capriolio.
Thank you. An excellent presentation, again. A motion to approve.
All right. We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item passes six zero. Councilmember Brandow absent. All right. We're now going to move to our two o'clock timed item. Just want to, bill number B-43. This is for adoption, adding all of the language to the Development Code. And I'm going to spare you all reading it all, but we're adding the final, the final language for adoption to Development Code. Jennifer, go right ahead.
Thank you, Council President. Councilmembers Jennifer Clark, Director of Development Resource Management. Tonight, you have before you the Development Code as amended by this body two weeks ago. The document that you received, you have your ordinance bill, you have the highlighted text of the council motions of everything that was made two weeks ago, and then you have the full red-line version of the entire document. We have nothing further to add to the record, and so, I would be happy to answer, or my team would be happy to answer, any questions that you have. Thank you.
All right. Well, now, take the item out to the public. Do we have any members of the public wishing to comment on the item? All right. Seeing none, I'll bring this back to the dais. Councilmember Soria.
I just want to make a motion to amend or do a small change of the Development Code in the use of the regulations, the Mixed Use District Table 15 hyphen 1102, related to entertainment and recreation, small-scale, make a motion to change the use permission from a P to a C in the new Mixed Use District.
Second.
Councilmember Brand.
I'd like to make a motion to restore sections related to recycling centers that were deleted or modified by the Planning Commission. Specifically, restoration should include the following. Restore sections 15 dash 2750B1, and I'll get a copy to the city attorney. Two, restore section 15 dash 2750B2. This relates to the hours of operations for CRV recycling centers. Three, restore sections 15 dash 2750B5D relating to permitting of CRV centers in underserved convenience zones. And remove Planning Commission modifications to sections 152750B15 regarding vouchers, so that the text reverts to the language in the September 2015 draft. That's my first motion. And a second motion pursuant to what we discussed earlier.
Really quickly, you have, you need a second for that motion?
Yeah.
I'll second your motion.
Okay. And then, finally, restore the language on the marijuana dispensaries to the New Development Code would be my second motion.
I'll second that. All right.
Thank you.
All right. So, have any other councilmembers like to add any other amendments? Councilmember Olivier.
I just had a quick question for council.
All right. Can you explain to me your motion?
I worked with Jennifer on this motion related to some issues that we would experience in the district, so.
in the district, so could you help me with that?
Thank you.
Councilmember Olivier, Councilmember Soria. So upon further review of the document, Councilmember Soria had concerns about entertainment small scale in neighborhood mixed use and its compatibility with surrounding neighborhoods, and asked that, just in that one category, that instead of being a permitted use, that it be a conditional use permit required, so that it would ensure that there was full public vetting of potential conflicts with surrounding neighborhoods.
All right. All right. So we will take the motions, well, and we also need a motion, am I right, city attorney, to approve the entire development code with the added amendments, correct?
Yes, the main motion would be to approve the entire development code as amended, depending upon the votes on the amendments.
Okay, so I guess we can, what we'll do, councils, what we will wait to see how the amendments fall, and then whatever amendments make in, we will then receive a motion to accept the development code with the amendments as a whole document.
And Council President, if I could clarify, Councilmember Brand's motion concerning the marijuana dispensaries was discussed last week. If approved, that would be final as of today, but the other motions, since they are new, that those particular parts would be considered introduced today and would be adopted next week.
Understood. Thank you for that clarification. So first, we'll go to Councilmember Soria's motion. We have a motion and a second for these entertainment areas. All those in favor? All opposed?
No.
Okay, we, the vote is 5 to 1. Councilmember Olivier voting no, and Councilmember Brandow absent. Next, we're gonna go to Councilmember Brand's motion. Councilmember Brand, you had two motions.
The first one was regarding restoring language in the, regarding the recycling centers, and for some reason, the planning commission took it out. And I think we all have talked about the problem with vagrancy and the magnets that some of the recycle centers do, and this gives us more control on the problem, so I'm trying to restore that language to give the city more control under the recycling centers. Correct?
That's correct.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor? All opposed? Item passes 6-0 with Councilmember Brandow absent. Councilmember Brand, your second motion was concerning marijuana dispensaries.
To restore the language in the marijuana dispensary clinics that basically prohibited, correct, city attorney? And in the new development code.
That's correct.
Okay.
And on this one, Councilmember Brandow already registered a yes vote.
Yes, Councilmember Brandow is a yes vote on this, so we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item passes 6 to 1, Councilmember Olivier voting no.
No.
Right, so, 6 to 1. Councilmember Cantaro, you have motions you wanna add?
Yes.
Okay, please, go ahead and add your motions at this time. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have some amendments I'd like to add, and to begin with, I wanted to thank the city attorney's office, Doug and Talia and Neri, Finance Department, Connie and Kim, and Code, Richard, Salinas, and Del Lesterbrook. And the gentlemen that you see out here, the gentlemen that we worked together on doing, on setting a mobile food vendor amendments, and we checked with Dan Zack as well from planning, and I wanted to thank Ruben for having his input in here, Ruben, Guillermo, Tony, Gerardo, Jorge, and Cruz. Muchas gracias por ayudándonos. The, we also worked with Councilmember Soria's office, with Gilbert attending the meetings and formulating the amendments that we had. And this would relate only to the mobile food vendors, and I will tell you that these requests were made by the food vendors themselves. They felt that they needed to tighten up the ordinance and add these regulations on it, so they're working with them, and it was one of the things that they really felt would be better in having their business succeed. And so the, I wanted to thank Talia for writing up the amendments for, it's for section 15 dash 2740, that's the one that relates to food vendors, mobile vendors. And amendment one is relating a time limits for off-street locations in non-residential districts to be amended, that a vendor may stay in a single location for up to 12 hours in a 24-hour period, after which the vendor must move to a new location that is no less than 500 feet. Amendment number two, and Councilmember Soria, feel free to jump in if you, if there was any changes that you felt needed to be amended or clarified. Amendment number two would be for unpaved surfaces, notwithstanding any other provisions in this code, vendor shall be permitted to operate on unpaved surfaces in non-residential districts with prior written authorization of the property owner. And we're working with the city attorney's office in the developing of a form that the vendors can take to the property owner, have them sign it, and which basically gives them permission to operate on that property. And that will come at a later date as we go with that, they're working on that now. Amendment number three would be regarding the restaurant, residential, and school spacing. And it reads as follows, notwithstanding sections B and C below, vendor shall not operate within specified distance of the following uses as set forth below. That will be, A, vendor shall not operate within 300 feet of an existing restaurant during the restaurant's normal business hours with the following exceptions. One, vendors operating as part of a farmer's market or a special event. Number two, the restaurant and the vendor are operated by the same entity. Vendor shall not operate within 100 feet of residential uses with the following exceptions as, number one, caretakers' residence, or number two, residential units that are part of a vertical mixed-use development, and number three, vendors operating as part of a farmer's market.
On this one, can I just ask you a question on this one? So I think prior to your amendment on this one, it was 100 feet, and so I have a couple businesses in my district that may have a difficult time meeting the 300-feet requirement because they actually bring mobile food vendors within their business.
Yes.
They don't serve food, but they bring it within their business, so I'm not sure if we can provide either an exception or some mechanism where they can, they're able to bring a food truck in, into their business. I don't know if we could work.
Like a shopping center, if there's?
They're not operated by the same. Well, it's, for example, there's a bar and it has a patio, and they invite a food truck every so often. But there are other businesses in the neighborhood.
Did we talk about that, city attorney? We didn't. We can, we can take that out and clarify, get that clarified. It's a good question, very good.
Or what if you could just add an exception that allows a mobile vendor, if by permission of the owner, they have the opportunity to do that?
Could we add that?
In other words, you wanna modify the offered amendment to state that a mobile vendor may be allowed on the premises in an existing restaurant?
Or an existing business.
Despite the 300-foot rule?
Yeah.
Of an existing business?
Yeah.
You can offer that?
Yes. Can I offer that as an exception?
Yeah, perfect.
So that's a friendly amendment? Okay.
Yes. Now I lost my place.
Sorry.
Okay, number C, vendors shall not operate within 100 feet of schools with the following exceptions, that they sell only fresh produce, you're having the Cultiva La Salud working on that. And number two, vendors operating as part of a farmer's market or a special event, and the sections are written in there. And number three, any motorized food vendor may not operate within 1,000 feet, within 1,000 feet of a school during regular school hours unless authorized by the school. And then finally, in addition, let's see, we had two items, did you wanna talk about that, city attorney, or will we deal with that later? The last two items.
Yes, Councilmember, my recollection is that two of the items we discussed were staff working with their internal departments to put together a durable method of display for the vendor permits, they're required to have health department permits, et cetera, so sort of a durable method for them to either display or store those. And then we also discussed the possibility of the department, development department, putting together a form letter that vendor applicants can take to private property owners in order to get permission to work on their property.
Right. One of the recommendations that the food vendors made was that they have a sign that they can display on their vehicles that a city or county official driving by, checking, can look at it instantly rather than getting out of the car and saying, "Well, are you licensed? Do you have this or that?" This way, it's like a sticker that they could put on their vehicles, and then that way, they're not bothered with having to provide the information if they're real busy, but rather than just having it. And it makes it easier for those that aren't operating within the rules. And that was their recommendation, which was a very good one. And the second one, city attorney, that they have a form letter to take to the private property owners, giving them permission to operate on their property. So, and that's one that the city attorney's office would be working on, and that was also a recommendation by the vendors, so. Those will become, I'd like to bring those back at a later date because we, due to time constraints, we didn't have them done, and the discussion, that came in kind of late in the meetings with the vendors. But they're on board with all of these, and like I said, this was a lot of their recommendations with help with the city attorney's office. So that's, I'd like to make a motion that we accept those.
All right.
The amendments.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item passes 6.
Excuse me, Mr. President, I'm sorry. Did anybody wanna say anything? ¿Querían decir algo? Pero no más una persona? No? Okay, ya pasó todo entonces. It's done. Okay?
We voted 6-0 to adopt.
Las últimas dos cosas todavía tenemos que, que están en la lista. Okay.
Did you let them know we already voted?
Yeah, I did. Well, Jorge wants to say something.
Bueno, este, primeramente, les quiero dar gracias a cada uno de ustedes por darnos la oportunidad de mostrar que lo único que queremos es trabajar y con todos los permisos para servir mejor a nuestra comunidad. Y pues ahorita somos negocios pequeños, pero en un futuro quizás podamos ser negocios grandes, que va a ayudar a la comunidad de Fresno, incrementar trabajos, y ayudar en la economía también. Y muchas gracias a cada uno de ustedes.
Would you like to interpret? Yeah.
Sure. So he just said, thank you for giving him the opportunity and for working to address the issues, and allowing them to have their type of business, they're small, they're a small business now, that they hope that in the near future that they are able to grow the business, and really what they wanna do is be able to have the lawful permits to be able to comply and really serve the community of Fresno and help our local economy, and hopefully in the near future add, be a bigger business and add to the jobs here locally.
Yeah, they feel that this gives them the opportunity, putting these in place gives them the opportunity to grow as a business and really become a part of the tax base of the city of Fresno, and to be in compliance with all the rules and regulations. They feel that this will also put other vendors on notice, that they need to comply with the rules themselves, and if they don't, then they can't operate in the city of Fresno. So they wanna say, "Thank you very much."
All right. All right, we, do we have any other council members that'd like to add any other amendments? All right, seeing none, I'm gonna make a motion that we adopt the development code as amended, with staff's recommendation. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item passes 6-1 with Councilmember Brandow opposing. All right, thank you, staff. We'll move on. Councilmember Capriolio.
As a point of order, Council President, I've read the following, all the items left on the agenda, I've talked to staff about those items on the agenda, and due to a prior commitment, I must leave, but I would like to register a yes vote on the balance of the agenda, each and every item.
Thank you, Councilmember Capriolio. All right, we will now move on to item 3C. Actions pertaining to the annual wellness, fitness, and physicals program from...
Long day. I will be thorough but brief. Carried on us, Fire Department, I wanted to give you a quick overview of the Pinnacle Wellness and Fitness and Physicals Program. If we could... How do I start? Walk through this. This is not a program that pays firefighters to stay fit. This is not a program that firefighters receive money for exercising or receive any financial reward for being in shape. Rather, this is a proactive program to prevent and reduce workers' comp injuries and claims and medical costs for first responders. It's conducted by experts, the Pinnacle Training System, and I'll touch base later on this presentation on Clovis Fire and Police who have been using this since 2011. What the system does is they bring, oops, sorry, they bring their facilities essentially in a large truck, and they will back up right to a fire station. Several crews will come to that particular station, and they will conduct their fitness testing right there. They do an entire EKG monitoring on a stress treadmill test, both at rest and in exercise. They do a blood pressure testing, body composition, so they measure your body fat percentage versus your weight, and then a full blood panel workup, and that's important later on. They do also some fitness testing on strength, flexibility, leg press, et cetera, as listed here. Again, there's no monetary incentive for a firefighter, rather, this is a preventative way to try and reduce our losses. As I mentioned, they bring their facilities to the station. I see this as a multi-company drill format, will bring several crews to a particular station. They will be, I see this as more participative by the crews and by the members, because they're doing it in a crew format while they're on duty. Takes probably about 40 minutes, similar to when we take crews out of service to drill. This would be no different. As opposed to asking them to go to do a health comp-related physical, taking you back to all those items that were listed in the health comp in this physical, you don't get those in a health comp physical. Rather, you get, you would have to request those, and it takes a referral and several additional appointments to get all of those tests done in a proactive way. That's why a health comp physical isn't necessarily as robust... It also will provide one-on-one wellness and fitness coaching to our members. It will be HIPAA compliant, with each member receiving their own personal results. However, the Fire Chief and Administration, myself, will receive a general overview of the strengths or weaknesses of the entire department, allowing us to target what we need to improve on, whether it be strength, flexibility, endurance, cardiovascular, et cetera. I wouldn't get that with a health comp physical approach. This program is intended to save lives. Another key point to bring your attention, firefighters have a presumptive disability law for several diseases. Health, I'm sorry, heart, lung, cancer, and infectious diseases. Which means if we can prevent those things, there is not going to be the long-term payout under the presumptive law for firefighters. Meaning, going back to the blood test I mentioned, if I can catch any type of cancer or other disease within a blood test early and start action immediately, we are going to prevent a long-term claim. That will be very, very costly to the city. The annual cost for this program, and again, it's a pilot program for a year, is $135,000. That's 5.5% of the dollars that we spent in 2014 on workers' comp claims. For example, 60% of our claims in 2014s were sprains and strains. Those are all preventable injuries. Let me give you one more example. A shoulder and knee injury costs about $40,000. Rehab, the surgery, et cetera. That does not include the cost to shift replacement, backfill behind that employee. If we could prevent three or four of those shoulder injuries, we have paid for the cost of this program. You're going to result in healthier, fitter firefighters, returning to work much quicker. And then, as I noted, the Police Department and the Fire Department in Clovis, although it is a smaller department and their claims wouldn't be as large as ours, it does show a history of success to date with the notes that are attached and on the screen. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have about the program.
And I'll take this item out to, well, actually, City Attorney, did you need to add something to this before we went out to the public?
Nothing to add.
And I'll take this item out to the public. Do we have any members of the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the DIAS, Councilmember Brand.
Hi, Chief. Just a couple of questions. This is about $135,000?
Yes.
Okay. And I've talked to a few of your members, and cancer is assumed, presumed to be an occupational-related injury. So therefore, if a firefighter gets cancer, then it's a workers' comp claim and not a go-to-health comp, correct?
Yes.
That's state law. There's a federal law?
Yes, federal.
Okay, okay. And you mentioned that, like, sprains and strains, they're, I guess, typical, would make sense firefighter-type of injuries. How would the, this program, which does what, like, body scans? Is that what it does?
No. This program, it works one-on-one with a fitness professional. This is, has a PhD in fitness and exercise science. They're not teaching them how to lift heavy weights. They're teaching them how to also strengthen the finer muscles around each of the major joints, such as your shoulders and your knees, in addition to other things that they may need based on what the results are of their fitness exam or their physical.
But, okay, that, okay, I got that. So that's where you think that would help out?
Yes.
Okay. But they get the scans, which are normally, would not be part, that would identify cardiovascular, cancer, those kind of things?
Yeah. The blood test will possibly result in capturing an anomaly, as well as a stress test, a 12K EKG lead treadmill stress test. What happens is the administrator might see an anomaly on that EKG. They'll pivot to that member and say, "You need to go see your doctor because this doesn't look right." If we can stop someone that might have a blockage, and when they go to the doctor and they do some follow-up testing from having a heart attack at the station by just doing a couple different procedures, we're money ahead.
Well, I think of the cost of, like, a cancer treatment or cardiovascular. I mean, if this is on a workers' comp, that's got to be astronomical, right?
Yeah. It can be very expensive. But again, this is a very, this is a proactive approach, too.
Also, I'm thinking if you identify these things early and prevent them, you're preventing...
I see this as a much more aggressive approach in getting members to get annual physicals that are robust, that can catch things.
Ask you a question, too. For firefighters, are there physical standards? In other words, I know you come in, you've got to be in shape and stuff, but if you've been there 20 years, do you have to keep a certain weight limit, height limit? Can you be five foot five and be 300 pounds?
You're not going to be very effective. We do not have a standard that members must maintain.
Are you aware of any fire departments that have those, that have standards?
Yes, I am.
Okay. What's your personal opinion?
It has to be crafted in a way that, we're not trying to eliminate people. There's ways to craft them, so you want to give them a fitness plan, which is kind of along these lines. And if they can't seem to come in line within so many months, about six months, there shows improvement, then you bring them into a little bit more aggressive fitness regimen plan. There's all, they're all over the map on how these are crafted, but you'll have a lot of challenges with introducing that.
I'm just thinking, you know, that we're trying to reduce injuries, promote healthy, you know, employees, and particularly in your line of work, which is very, very physical. And I'm sure by the time somebody's, you know, my age, probably retired 20 years earlier, but there's a lot of wear and tear. And I'm just curious if in the future, we can consider something like that. So it's, works both ways, that there's reasonable standards, you know, for the employees to stay in shape. At the same time, we're trying to do what we can to, you know, offer the tools, right?
I think it's an excellent point. I think this is a great foundation. Right now, it's very, very, the fitness program essentially is we ask members to exercise an hour a day while they're on duty. We don't provide a whole lot of equipment, other than through some, you know, nonprofit donations. But this is a great platform to start for future success, and I think that would be a next step.
And I know this is not anything like the old Police Department, well, this would actually paid members, it was pensionable. This is strictly just a flat fee and people eligible to, they receive no compensation, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And this is a trial program?
It's a one-year pilot program, and we'll look for the successes and maybe some gaps and come back.
Yeah. I only ask that when you come back a year from now, that if we could measure, you know, pre and post, how, what our cost and claims were, you know, before we put the program, a year later or two years later, has it made a difference? Is it bringing down the, those kind of claims? And I think if, in the future, you could, you know, evaluate some reasonable standards of fitness for the members, that I think would even be better as far as cost-saving measure.
Very good.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to approve.
All right. We have a motion. I'll second it. And I'll just add briefly that, Chief, thank you for bringing this forward. I completely agree. I think last time we were here, I made a similar comment, that I think this is precisely the type of actions we ought to be taking for our firefighters in making sure that they are healthy. The best healthcare is preventative healthcare, and I think this achieves to strike that balance. So it's a wise use of, a wise use of resources, in my opinion. So thank you for bringing it up, and I wholeheartedly support this. So we have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor? All opposed? Item passes seven, zero. Thank you. All right. We will now move on to item three, D. Actions pertaining to awarding contract for the construction of electrical upgrades at Fresno Area Express's compressed natural gas fueling section.
Good evening, President and Councilmembers. Essentially, item 1016, three D on the agenda, is related to our compressor and our ability to deliver natural gas and support the electrical operation of our facility. Essentially, we've got one compressor that's about 12 years old. The electrical on it is old. The need is very much for us to replace that electrical. That's what this will do. In addition to that, the generator is, well, actually, there is no generator right now that's sufficient for us. This would provide us with a sufficient generator, and that's essentially what this item, what this one item will do. We've got one after this, so just want to make sure I'm taking them one at a time.
All right. Thank you. We'll now take this item out to the public. Do we have any members of the public wishing to comment on this item?
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right. Motion and second. All those in favor? All opposed? Item passes six, zero.
Okay. Council, again, this item is regarding the bus stop, the ADA bus stop assessment. Essentially, there, between the public and the drivers saying that some of the bus stops are located at places that might not be very ADA-friendly, this is our opportunity to assess the bus stop inventory and have that done by our most qualified vendor, which is SZS. And that's essentially what this item is. Bus stop assessment, ADA assessment.
All right. I have, I'm going to take this item out to the public, and I have Speaker for this, Mr. Scott Bog...
Boghossian.
Bog...
Boghossian.
Boghossian. I'm sorry.
We do the same thing with them, so it's okay.
The handwriting is, it was tough for me.
Oh, okay. Sorry, that's Scott. He's your favorite. To Rick.
All right.
Council President.
We'll allow, because we know you, Rick, but go right ahead.
You want to see my identification?
Yes.
Councilmember, Council, Council President, Rick Steitz, representing Amalgamated Transit Union Fresno City Bus Drivers. About a month ago, I was somewhat against this. I don't think I am anymore. The price tag was certainly a sticker shock for me. The, I've been driving a bus for like 35 years, and I don't think there's ever been an inventory of this. ATU bus drivers have pointed out problems with bus stops. I'm not sure what the date was, but I think it was in the late 1990s or 2000s. There was a formula, maybe Mr. Boghossian can speak more to it, of what is required for an ADA bus stop. I don't know that that has been followed through by the city. I hope it is. But I think that this may be a chance, if the Council decides to go back and do an inventory. I read the proposal. It says that the organization that would do the research would have meetings with stakeholders, and I would ask that you implement that if this goes forward, that ATU 1027, as a representative of the city employees who drive the buses to service these bus stops, be considered a stakeholder in that meetings take place with us also, and that we would have some constructive input on this. Again, it's pretty expensive. I have a question as to whether the city could do it in-house. Perhaps it can, but I'll leave that up to Council discussion. Thank you.
All right. Scott, were you going to make remarks?
Come on down. My name's Scott Boghossian. I work, I work for you. I'm an employee of yours. I've been working for the city close to 30 years. And with Mr. Steitz talking to me about what is there, we're somewhat in favor of this. Something I've been trying to get myself done over the years. It takes a long time to get a bus stop improvement done as it sits right now. Actually, you helped me out on one, where we had some problems with bus shelters, and they had to do a lot of shifting and changing. Maybe this consultant group can get us into the right frame and get us going in the right direction. We have a lot of bus stops that are not ADA compliant, because after '91, they didn't have to become compliant. And like, if you go down Palm Avenue, northbound, and you go past Dakota, there isn't any ADA bus stops north. There's like one on Ashland that you can drop somebody off. So this might be a really good eye-opener for the City Council. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Do we have any other members of the public that would like to comment on this item?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Well, I'll bring it back to the DIAS, and we have a motion and a second. Councilmember Olivier.
Thank you, Council President. I know that we talked a little bit in my office, and I just, I don't really have anything to say. I guess this is something that I can support tonight, because, look, I mean, it's no secret that I'm very concerned about the condition of our bus stops and the condition of our system here in the city of Fresno. I think that to have an unsafe or filthy and/or ADA noncompliant bus stop is a tragedy, and it doesn't encourage people to ride our system. It encourages people to avoid our system. But you don't need a lecture from me. You've been in transportation your entire careers. And so the only thing I would say, and I always talk about, the Councilmember Quintero's shelf of studies that were done, and then that was it, and the studies end up on the shelf. This is a heck of a lot of money for this study to just end up on a shelf somewhere. Is, am I correct in understanding that the only reason why we're doing the study is in case we get sued by someone? We can say, "Look, we did a study"? Or, I mean, are we actually going to do something about this?
No, not even close. The idea is to do something about it. Does it protect us? Yes, it does. But even more, it's needed. And we do have the dollar set aside in order to make those changes. We know the need to make the changes. So, and also for the record, just want to make sure we're clear. We've already talked to the, we've already talked internally about the proposed vendor meeting with ATU and looking at the bus stop assessment. So they're not absent from our process.
Okay. Thank you. I'll be supporting this tonight.
All right. We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor? All opposed? Item passes six, one, with Councilmember Brandal voting no.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, staff. All right. We'll now move on to item three, F, which is Resolution, 19th Amendment to the Annual Appropriation Resolution Number 2015-104, to transfer $500,000 from the MTBE Settlement Fund to the TCP Settlement Fund outside Council. Staff?
Council President, excuse me, Council President Baines and members of the City Council, Henry McLaughlin, Business Manager with the Water Division. Before you today is the, for your approval is the 19th Amendment to the AAR to fund legal service costs for the TCP settlement action. This amendment would transfer $500,000 from the MTBE Settlement Fund to a newly established TCP Settlement Fund. And then those funds would be appropriated for expenditure primarily with outside Council. On September 24th, 2015, the Council approved the expenditure of funds consistent with the legal services agreement that was in place to cover the ongoing costs associated with the litigation. The approval of this amendment would provide the funding for these expenditures. Available for any questions? Thank you.
All right. We'll now take the item out to the public. Do we have any members of the public wishing to comment on this item? All right. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the DIAS. City Attorney?
I was just going to clarify that the Council has already approved this expenditure. This is purely the appropriation to allow it to happen.
Right.
So was this approved in the budget?
No, this is an amendment to the budget to transfer the funds for the expenditure.
But it was already in the budget? Is that what you're saying, in terms of the monies being in that?
The Council approved the expenditure in closed session concerning existing litigation.
I see. Okay. Thank you.
All right. I'll make a motion that we approve staff's, recommend, that we approve staff's recommendation. I'll need a second. Thank you. All those in favor? All opposed? Item passes six, zero. Councilmember Brandal absent. Thank you, staff. All right. We'll now move on to item three, G, which is award a requirements contract in the estimated amount of $1,233,765 to Chimera Water Solutions. We'll now move on to item three G, which is award a requirements contract in the estimated amount of $1,233,765 to Camaro Water Solutions.
Good evening, Council, good evening, Council President Baines. My name is Rick Staggs. I'm the operations manager for the wastewater treatment facility. Can't hear you? Nope, can't hear me? Okay, let's try that again. My name is Rick Staggs. I am the wastewater manager.
You say Rick Steigs?
Excuse me?
You're Rick Steigs, too?
I'm Rick Staggs, actually. S T A G G S.
Oh, Staggs, Staggs, okay.
A little nervous, I've never done this before, so bear with me. I'm here today to seek approval for a requirements contract, as stated earlier, with Camaro Water Solutions for the amount of $1.2 million per year for the purchase of ferric chloride. Ferric chloride is a wastewater treatment chemical used for a variety of different reasons. Two of the major reasons is for hydrogen sulfide reduction and digester gas, as well as a permitted requirement for odor control. Both of these permit requirements are part of the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District permit that the wastewater treatment plant holds. Other uses for ferric include the protection of plant infrastructure from the hydrogen sulfide, as well as from the formation of struvite. Ferric chloride also aids in wastewater solid settling and de-watering. A notice inviting biz was published on August 26th, and specifications were sent to 20 prospective bidders. Two sealed bids were received and opened on September 15th. Camaro Water Solutions was the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. Ferric chloride is an ongoing operating expense and is included on our annual ONM budget. So if you have any questions, let me know.
All right. Thank you, staff. We'll now take the item out to the public. Do we have any members of the public wishing to comment on this item? All right. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the dais. It was a pleasure with the council. I'll make a motion that we approve staff's recommendation. Councilmember Olivier seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item passes six zero with Councilmember Brandal absent. Thank you. Now we'll move on to item three H, acts pertaining to submitting a Water Smart Grant application to the Department of Interior Bureau of Reclamation.
Yes. Thank you, Council President, City Council. This item is to submit an application to the United States Bureau of Reclamation for their Water Smart Grant program. This is the second year in a row we want to submit this application. Last year, we submitted an application, and we're granted a million-dollar award for the Kings River Pipeline, so this year we want to go back. We were approached by the Fresno Metropolitan Flood Control District, represented by John Santos today, about doing a partnership where we would take the irrigation system at four of their stormwater basins, get it off of the city's potable water system, and put it onto the non-potable system, which is in around the basin. So it would relieve demand on our system, which is very helpful. It's about 250 households' worth of water a year that we would be able to save with this, and so with the approval of the council, they've already, their board has already agreed to be a co-applicant. They have appropriated the money for their portion of the project. There is no expenditure of funds out of the city of Fresno's enterprise fund or general fund for this. We're just the agent that can submit a USBR application. So with that, we need to request approval of the process to submit an application.
All right. We'll now take the item out to the public. Do we have any members of the public wishing to comment on this item? All right. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the dais. Councilmember Soria?
So tell me just a question. We're only doing it if we receive the grant? Is that?
Yes, so they've already appro, FMFCD has already appropriated the money. It's about a $600,000 project. It's a 50-50 split with the USBR. We didn't budget that money in our budget to contribute to a retrofit, but we're going to hope that the USBR makes the contribution, and if they do, the FMFCD will come up with the balance.
So that's the only way that we'll move forward with the project?
That's correct.
If we get the grant?
That's exactly right.
And we're pretty confident you think that we'll get it?
Yeah, I think we're in pretty good shape. The things that we're doing with the pipeline we did last year, and this to get water off the potable system are all viewed very favorably right now by the bureau. And just a heads up, we're also working with the school systems, so we're also, the maximum amount a grant can be awarded to a local government like the city of Fresno is a million dollars. We got the full million last year. This is 300,000 with FMFCD. We're currently working with the school system to see if they could also take advantage of the grant to retrofit their, some of their schools to get, improve their irrigation system. Again, that helps us by reducing the demands at the school system, so we probably bring that back to you in January with that. We're working with them right now to put something together.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We have a motion by Councilmember Soria. I'll second. Councilmember Olivier will second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item passes six zero. Thank you, staff. We'll now move on to item three I, which is commending section F, section one dash three oh four of the Fresno Municipal Code relating to code violations. Go right ahead.
Good afternoon. Jennifer Clark, Development Resource Management. Last year, when the mayor and city council initiated the Code Enforcement Task Force, staff expressed that having an additional remedy to deal with delinquent property owners was needed. As you may recall, Ben Rash was a vocal advocate for a receivership program, so today I submit to you for consideration Ben's bill. As stated in the staff report, this was one of the recommendations of the task force and was to be introduced this fall. We have delivered this charge, excuse me, this change within our timeline for Phase One. Simply stated, this proposed amendment gives the city attorney's office the ability to use the specific remedy of receivership for non-responsive owners. If you have additional questions about the receivership program itself, either I or the city attorney can answer those questions. Thank you.
All right. We'll now take the item out to the public. Do we have any members of the public wishing to comment on this item? All right. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais. We were all big fans of Ben Rash. Can we actually name this bill after him, City Attorney?
Yes, you may.
Yeah, so what I'd like to do is, whatever is the appropriate way to do it, as council receives and accepts this mo, this amendment to the section, I'd like to, I'd actually like to formally call this Ben's bill. So I'm going to make a motion that we accept staff's recommendation with the slight amendment of adding the name of this bill as Ben's bill. However, we need to demonstrate that.
Thank you.
All right. Anyhow, so we have the motion, we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item passes six zero. Thank you. Thank you, staff. Counsel, that actually concludes our final item of the day. We'll now go to unscheduled communication. Do we have any members of the public that would like to comment on anything that was not on the agenda today? All right. Seeing none. Counsel, I'm going to, I'm going to have us adjourn today's meeting in the memory of the victims of the shootings in San Bernardino today. Our hearts and prayers should be with that community at this moment, so with that, we're adjourned.[1071.94]